Right now.
Wow. Whatever you do, be nice.
I don't know what your cell phone is. Remember the house is six zero four one.
Just make sure you're diplomatic in your response. Yes.
Pam, I'm here, but I just got.
Remember the signal.
You don't have less money.
Thanks, chief. Okay, we're good to go. We'll call the meeting to order. Record of attendance, Lynda, you're good? Uh, declarations of conflict of interest, anyone up front? And approval of agenda. So we have some additions. We have the request for decision nine A for dear population. AMA Spring Conference Financial Request is nine B, nine C is FCM Conference Sponsorship, nine D, request for decision Arts and Culture Governance Model. Is there anything else anyone wanted to add or delete?
Um, the general petitions indicated.
Okay, Counselor McLeod, seconded by Counselor Hood. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Better not be addition because we're done that. No, I'm just kidding.
Oh, but I just, well, I was trying to get my hand up and get something on for an addition.
Yep, go ahead. So it'll be nine E?
It'll be, um, in relation to, uh, I don't know what you call them, but great big long transport trucks that are only fit to go on the one oh, one hundred series highways that are now traipsing around our town, occupying parking spaces, beating up our curbs and beating up our streets. I'd like to make a motion with respect to that.
Okay, so I'm gonna put nine E transport trucks, okay?
That'll be it.
Good. Okay, so, um, thank you, Counselor McLeod. Lynda, we're redoing that.
So that's what I was gonna say. That's what I was going to say.
Thank you. Okay, Jeff?
Uh, your worship, I'd like to remove item six D A. Uh, our engineer is not here today and nor is our consultant, so if we can defer that to a later, later date.
Good. Thank you. Deputy, do you have anything to add or delete?
We got Second Street on there, Lynda? I called you yesterday on Second Street.
Oh, I think we've got, we've got that looked after.
Got that taken care of? Good, thank you.
She visited today.
Good.
Okay, so now we have nine E added and we have six D A removed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. And I just wanted to ask one favor of counsel. Gil is here to present the facade society update. Are we okay to move the Mariner Center pro- concert proposal up and then that way, if you have to leave, Gil, you're welcome to stay, but it's easier for you, okay?
Agreed, agreed for my part, your worship.
All right, good?
Yeah.
Okay, does anybody disagree?
Nope.
Okay, we're good to go. All right. Okay, so you're on. Catherine and Gil, facade society update.
That, that'll be in my cell phone. Well, good afternoon and I want to thank you for the opportunity to present to you today. I would like to take just a minute to introduce you to the facade society members. It's a seven-member volunteer board and these members have been together since two thousand and fourteen. On your behalf, Catherine Murphy, who is our treasurer, Kilby Nicholson. Kilby couldn't be here today. Uh, she's meeting with Bay Fairies. Sonia Ryan, who's our secretary, Angela Collier, who's here today, and Shawna Jackson, and Tony Papadogakis. And, uh, so I'd just like you to know that these people have been working on your behalf since, since late two thousand and fourteen. And of course, uh, not to be remiss, I don't, I want to mention the, the great support we get from Natalie. So the program initiated in July two thousand and fourteen and it was later that fall that the phase one was launched. And phase one was basically the downtown Main Street, both sides of Main Street and the downtown core. Later on in October two thousand and sixteen and late, and implemented up until December two thousand and seventeen, we, uh, we did phase two with consent from counsel. And phase two, uh, expanded the parameters north on Main to Vancouver, south on Main to Arigil, forest to King on Water, and Cliff to Parade on Willow and all the buildings in between. So phase two encompassed a much larger geographic area. I'm not sure, I'll slide that. Okay, so the, don't, back this one, thank you. So the facade guidelines, the, uh, the application process is, uh, is there before you. Um, basically that's the, the, uh, process that we follow. Um, the overall goals of the facade guidelines are to encourage high-quality storefronts which respect the architectural elements of the buildings they reside in. So we actually work with the building owner, um, to make sure that some of the architecture features are highlighted. I think if you, if you check on Main Street, you'll see that there's, uh, a pretty significant number of gooseneck lights now. So instead of having backlit signage, we have raised letter signage and overhead gooseneck lighting and it's, it's becoming more and more, um, obvious on Main Street. Achieve consistent, high-quality signage, as mentioned. Conserve and restore upper-story facades, including significant architectural details, and implement the down, the town's downtown urban design policies. The map that you see there, um, so the legend, uh, you'll see the bright color, that's the completed facades. Um, next are not completed, the black, those are the ones that are presently underway. Uh, they, we, uh, hope that they'll be completed this spring or early summer. And then the most important, um, ones for today are the ones that are indicated in, in red is the, um, targeted facade. So those are the ones we, we want to get to this year.
The red ones? Or the yellow?
Yeah.
The red?
The yellow are.
Oh, this year, red, yeah.
The yellow are complete, the black.
Dark blue.
Dark blue, okay, that's black to me. Um, those are the ones that are underway, not yet completed. And then the red are the ones that we've tar- we want to target for this year. So where are we at, um, today? And as of today, the program achievements, we've received sixty-two applications. Uh, twelve of those were in two thousand and seventeen. Forty-nine facade applications have been completed. Um, twenty-four of those were completed last year. Thirteen facades are to be completed in late spring of two thousand and eighteen. We've dispersed two hundred and three thousand, one hundred and eighty-seven dollars in grants and the value in, uh, of those completed projects is eight hundred and ninety-four thousand, two hundred and sixty-one. So congratulations, you've got a better than a four to one, uh, return on that investment. Some fast facts, we've had a new microbrewery opened and now expanding in town, seven new food businesses have opened or expanded on Main Street, nine neglected buildings with new facades, which is changing and altering the downtown landscape, and sixty-two projects will have been completed by the summer of two thousand and eighteen. Some, just some photographs of the successes. Um, I know that we were having a conversation, earlier this week, that we hope to feature the facade program during the National CIB Symposium in Strathcona, Alberta later this fall. So it's just an opportunity for the town to, to sell itself during that conference and try to encourage people to come. So the society requested today, uh, is that the program continue into two thousand and eighteen in the phase two eligible area. Uh, we're seeking a budget allocation of one hundred and forty thousand dollars and that would be inclusive of society expenses and the other expenses that we would incur would be, uh, insurance policy, um, and then some renderings possibly that, uh, are done by acoustics. But there's, um, there's li- there's limited additional expense. Most of the money is directly dispersed by way of grant. We'd like continued support and focus from the town on derelict buildings because it's important for the town to partner in trying to encourage the derelict buildings to, uh, to be addressed as well. We have, as I mentioned earlier, twenty-three sites targeted for the two thousand and eighteen program and that's the, uh, the rationale behind the budget request. And unless you have any questions, um, I would ask.
Well, first of all, thank you. Like, thank you is hardly enough, but this is, this has just turned things around. And I, and I think, um, I think sometimes folks don't understand that, you know, when you're, when you're dealing with a downtown that, that looked like ours through no one's fault because economic downturn, you know, the ferry's gone, all those pieces come together and it's like the perfect storm, that, um, I can't even say how many folks have said, you need to get people to fill in those empty storefronts. And, and nobody wants to do that, but when your neighbors are looked after, then you're more apt to purchase that property. And I think that's what's happening now, that people are seeing, you know, when the town invests and the businesses invest, then they're more than willing to do that. So it's made a.
I think the towns should be congratulated because I honestly believe you breathe new life in the downtown.
Yeah.
Through this program.
Yeah, it's, it's an amazing difference. And throughout the province, because I've, I've had a half a dozen towns calling, ask will you come speak on this? Because the success is, uh, it's noticeable. So, good stuff. Go ahead there. Counselor Hood?
First of all, I've got a statement and then I got a question. The statement is this. We, uh, when I was on council, I was a member of the Downtown Development Corporation and for years we fought to keep that organization alive. And, um, this program's been so darn successful, it's opened my eyes and I realized previous council did a great thing when they, um, moved ahead and took over really the responsibility for downtown development from the Downtown Development Corporation. And the realization is this that, um, through no fault of our own, but the way, the way things were organized with the business improvement, district tax and all, um, we never had enough money to do the kinds of programs that you're doing here now. It was all going to administration, frankly, in a nutshell. And so, the council of the day, some of whom are sitting around the table now, are to be congratulated for going in this direction. I say that. However, so my question then, though, is, Gil, um, when you do some of these, uh, projects, what do you require of, of the recipients in terms of other things like fascia boards? And, I mean, there's some examples on Main Street, one I can think of right now where we put lipstick on the pig, but it's still, uh, it's put lipstick on the. It's still pork.
Sounds like Jordan pork.
But there's, there's one there where it's been painted, it looks good and everything, but there's a rotten fascia board right across the top. So what kind of follow-up do we have?
So I'm not sure which building you're referring to. There's some that there's.
Well, I don't want to single without, but, you know.
Yeah, without, without identifying any, there's some that have actually gone ahead and done some work already, um, limited amount of work at their own expense. Uh, and those are included in our target group, uh, but they haven't really participated in the facade program yet. So our, our criteria is pretty, um, pretty strict, I guess, you know, we, we require certain things. Only certain, um, elements are, are available to be, uh, included in the grant process.
Well, I had that concern because there was, there is, uh, there is one or more where we've got that situation, you know, and, uh.
I, I didn't, you know, at your convenience, if you could pass that on, we'll certainly deal with it. And if it is, uh.
I'll speak to you privately about it.
Certainly.
Because it's, it, it seems to me that if we're gonna put the money out, we, there are some conditions that we could have additional to, you know?
Yeah.
Like a condition set, and we're only talking facades, right?
Yeah.
But if you've got a, a portion of the facade that's defective and it's not covered with program, it should be fixed as part of the program, I think.
Oh, I totally agree. And, and in some cases, we've, uh, we've gone back to, uh, to places where paint is peeled and things like that and have it, had it rectified. So, yeah, we definitely look into that.
But it's a great job you've done. I really, for the reasons I just gave, applause. Thanks.
I know that Natalie would like to complete the, um, I'm sorry.
Do you mind if I do the questions?
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay.
I didn't, I didn't realize.
Yeah, um, good job, Gil, and good job to the committee. I think you took probably one of the weakest links in the downtown, um, towards the top of the hill where Dicky Shapiro and Jackson's were and probably it looks like the strongest part of our downtown now. And I think there's gonna be an addition of a microbrewery down there. Um, what the work that Richard did both, on both sides of the street was phenomenal. I know he took a, took, uh, part in the facade program, but he spent a lot of money up and above than what, that what was given to him. Like you said, four to one, it would have been more than that with probably Richard, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so I think, um, you've guys done an excellent job. I have no problem supporting the ask. Uh, just gonna ask Jeff a question. Um, how much do we, we're gonna do the operational stuff coming up? How's that?
Hang on one second, Wade.
Yeah, so we're right now in the process of putting together the first draft of the operational budget. So, uh, knowing what the ask is, we'll incorporate that and, uh, same process as capital budget. Essentially, we put it together, we work as staff, try and bring you something that, that is close to, uh, acceptable, but we don't make the decisions.
Yes.
We, we will give you some options and, uh, hope to, hope to reach an operating budget by April council meeting.
Yeah.
Uh, at the latest.
Okay, good. And just to touch on what Counselor Hood said, uh, when they, we had the discussion about the Development Corporation, I think, uh, the last budget they presented us, it had a hundred and seven thousand dollars in salaries and ex- a hundred and three thousand dollars in salaries and expenses and a hundred and seven thousand dollar total budget. So they had four thousand dollars for activities that, things like the facade program and promotion, so. And they weren't paying the general manager, that's right. That was, that was, that was still on their dime. So, um, you guys have done really, really good job with the money and, um, I'm just looking forward to the next, the next session and the session after that, because I can see this ongoing for a couple of years.
Okay, so I have a question before Wade, off of what Phil was saying. So as far as the budget goes, we don't usually make decisions for, on presentations, but is it the right thing to do to make the motion to refer this to budget? Okay, go ahead there, Wade.
Absolutely. Um, all I have to say, Gil, and it's, I'm, the reason I even bring it up at all is because, uh, because Counselor Hood said it. And that is the, the idea of the lipstick on a pig, which I heard when, when the facade program first began, how many times did we see that on Facebook for heaven's sake?
That's how we're painting. I could charge every dol- a dollar for every person that said it.
Yeah, lipstick on a pig, lipstick on a pig. This is one of the huge economic drivers in the downtown right now because of the look of the places. It's, it's attracted the attention of, of the province generally. You and, uh, the com- committee should be congratulated and, uh, just thank you very much for what you've done. That simple.
Good, okay. So who wants to do that? Don, motion for the, it's the one, was it one forty? Okay, seconded by Sandy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary? Motion carried. Good stuff, thank you. Okay, so Natalie, you go ahead there.
So, um, since we've had the program running for the last three years, it was the appropriate time to do an economic impact, uh, study or report. So this is what I'm presenting, uh.
We can hardly hear you. Thanks.
This is what I'm presenting to you today. So, uh, why do we need to do this? And so it's for all the raising, reasons that are outlined, uh, in the copies that you've got there. Uh, number one is to look at, uh, increasing, um, the revenue potential for the businesses that are located in the facade area. Uh, it's also to look at, um, how do we, um, improve, uh, customer traffic in that area as well? And then also, how do we incentivize other businesses around the facade areas to also make improvement? So as Gil just, uh, nicely expressed, uh, our program achievements, there's three areas that I focused on. One was, we did a survey and so we asked some specific questions. I'll go through that. We looked at the occupancy, uh, within the downtown, looking at a two thousand and sixteen versus two thousand and eighteen, and we looked at what the property values are, again, looking, um, back the last three years. So we, uh, reached out to forty-six applicants. And so when I say forty-six applicants, those are individuals who might have put in multiple applications for our property. So it's a total of forty-six, so they match, uh, the sixty-two that we referenced earlier. And, um, we asked them eight, actually ten questions, two was about their name, address, the other one was, can I contact you? I took those two out. So eight real questions. Thirty-one applicants responded to the survey and those applicants are a mixture of property owners, uh, retail tenants, food and beverage services. So there is a good cross-section. And what you see are the eight questions. Why did you participate? What work did you do outside of the facade project exterior or interior improvements? Did it increase your customer traffic and by what percentage? Did it increase your sales and revenue by what percentage? And would you recommend the program? So question one, the results of, um, why did you participate? As you see, forty-eight percent said that their building was in poor condition, uh, twenty-six rebranding their business. And so when we say rebranding, it's not just the paint, the facade, but it's also, they did it and they did it inside of their businesses. They did it from a marketing perspective. They did it from a product perspective. They did it from an outreach. So they did the full turnkey rebranding. Uh, sixteen percent purchased property and they just took advantage of the program and then ten percent sprucing it up. So questions two and three were really to identify what the additional incremental value was outside of the specific facade work. So seventy-one percent of those thirty-one applicants spent more or did additional projects outside of the facade program. And of those, eighty-two percent of them spent more than five thousand. And if I can single out, thirty-six percent of those spent greater than thirty thousand dollars. So that's significant because in some cases, that was probably a couple hundred thousand dollars. Questions four and five, we talk about customer traffic. So fifty-eight percent saw an increase in customer traffic. So that doesn't necessarily translate into sales, but it's more people coming into their businesses. And, um, some of them said, by the post that was done on the Facebook page for the society, that they just wanted to come and check out Yarmouth. And so you got foot traffic that way. Questions six, seven, and eight talk about, or six and seven talk about revenue. So this is an interesting, uh, number. Thirty-nine percent saw an increase in revenue or sales. And, uh, generally, when we start to look at sales and revenue trends, the ones who have achieved some success, which it was like we've got fifteen, fifty percent, achieved greater than fifteen percent increase in sales revenue, those are directly related to the businesses that rebranded. So they took it beyond the facade. So I would really encourage businesses who want to invest in the next phase of their business development, that they start to go beyond the paint. And also, uh, a consideration is for continuous maintenance of the facades, uh, so that we can keep it at the level that they currently are. So of all of those thirty-one applicants, ninety-four percent said that they would recommend the program. The six percent, they just didn't fill out that little box. So that doesn't necessarily mean a no.
Mm-hmm.
But I think that's, uh, that's a good thing. So then we started to look at, you know, how does all of this work translate into, um, the downtown when you are walking? And before, we saw empty buildings. So this is an occupancy, um, comparison. I want to tell you, the source is me, by actually driving, knocking, opening doors, calling property owners to find out how many units, commercial units, that they have available. So when you look at the two, the pieces of information, so basically, we had a one percent increase in downtown commercial occupancy between May two thousand and sixteen and May two thousand and eighteen. So although that's only a one percent increase, that's significant when you look at the other numbers. So we had a fifty percent decrease in commercial properties for sale. And so a lot of that has to do with three things. One is that we have economic incentives. One is the facade program. One is the phased-in assessment agreement. And the third thing is that we have a willingness to work with them, uh, to help them achieve whatever their goals are. We had a twenty-two percent increase in available units for lease. So this isn't necessarily a bad thing. How we came about that is the new property owners have actually taken those properties and they have converted them into leasable units. So although we have more, we have better quality. There's still a ways to go, but we have better quality. We had a forty percent reduction in vacant properties. So what we call a vacant property is a property that's not rentable. So for some reason, uh, there might be some issues that they can't rent out that property. So we had five properties in two thousand and sixteen that we identified were in pretty bad shape. And today, we've identified three. And of those two, they, those property owners took advantage of the program and created something exceptional. And now what's happened is you have movement of businesses, those that were in what I would call sub, not nice. How's that?
More diplomatic than I am.
And now they've moved.
Desirable.
Less desirable.
Thank you.
Ooh, even clips.
Thank you, counsel. So.
Good for you.
And now they've moved into better quality, um, but locations. And so that's where we've seen a lot of movement in the last two years. So then we look at, you know, you spent all this money, what is, what is the, the payback, the return on investment to the property owner? So this is an interesting trend, not something that was predictable, but after three years, so I've shown you from two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and eighteen, the year-over-year, um, from two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and eighteen, there was a four point four nine increase in property value for those facade properties, right? So that's the aggregate to the total. Not each property had the same trend line, but overall, as compared to, if you look at all town commercial property value, that only increased by two point seven six percent. So if I was an investor, this is a really good opportunity for them to take advantage of it. And, uh, I leave you with those wise world, word of wisdom.
This is, as Phil would say, this is gold. This is, and I've said to you a hundred times, let's see some numbers, right? Because we get so excited and you're trying to explain, as we do with a number of things at this table, you're trying to explain to the public this, the tremendous value in doing these little things, right? So unbelievable. This is, I think I'm gonna frame that one. Go ahead, Phil.
Good, uh, nice job, Natalie. Um, how many agreements do we have with the phased-in taxation?
Six.
Six? Uh, I was telling her worship the other day, I was, that was one of the things when, uh, Zach Church was Minister of Municipal Affairs, is we got him to implement or asked him to implement some of the, uh, recommendations from the town task force. And he did not, some of them, not all of them, not like he's doing with the Glaze Report, but that's a different story for another time. And I was reading the paper, uh, your worship, two days ago or three days ago?
Yeah.
Um.
Two days ago.
CBRM Sydney is actually using the town's task force, the, the, for their central business district. One guy's doing a million-dollar renovation and doing the laddered in or phased-in taxation component, which, uh, yourself, uh, Dave Corkum and, uh, had a lot to do with. So, uh, even though it's doing a great job here in Yarmouth, it's being felt throughout Nova Scotia.
That was a million-dollar, wasn't it?
It's a million-dollar renovation in Sydney, yeah. Because of the, the laddered or the phased-in taxation component, which your worship was very adamant in, in talking to Minister Churchill about and implementing. Not only for Yarmouth, but for the rest of Nova Scotia.
For the whole province, yeah. Good stuff. Go ahead there, counsel.
Well, I gotta pick up on something that Deputy Mayor said. I would, I thought he would have been more positive in what our, uh, MLA and Minister of Education is doing, because I support him one hundred percent on the Glaze Report and so does Ann Jones, who sat with me last night. She's, she's got some credibility on these things. Now, got that off my chest.
I support her, too.
Here's what I, here's what I'd like to do, though, your worship. Uh, if possible, I'd like to have Natalie and Jeff talk and four point four nine percent increase in, uh, commercial, uh, uh, increase in the assessed value for the properties that have received the facade.
Mm-hmm.
And find out just what that does.
What that number is.
To our tax revenues, how much more it generates, so that we can kind of have a number of how much more taxes do we have and compare it to how much we're spending, kind of a useful number to know.
Yeah.
If it's possible.
Say it's more than covered.
And I got a feeling it's gonna be a good number.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you. If, if I may, I, I, I'll make a motion about it.
Well, yeah, if you want something, then make a motion.
CEO says he can do it. I'll check in a few minutes. So I'll make that a motion if you will.
Okay. Moved and seconded, discussion. Questions being called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary, motion carried. Thank you. Okay, you're going to stay. So it's, it's down on your agenda a bit, folks, but the Mariners Center concert proposal, and there's paperwork there anyway. So go ahead, Phil.
Thank you for indulging me in moving that on the agenda. So I guess really the only thing I can do is answer any questions you may have. It's, the proposal is fairly self-explanatory. I have been approached by members of two councils at least that have inquired as to why we aren't having more concerts at the Mariners Center. And I wanted to offer a realistic explanation of the situation and why we're, where we're at today. So the, I guess the water and the beans has changed a little bit over the years. And originally, we were able to land concerts and seat upwards of two thousand people. At some point in time, of course, the Fire Marshal determined that you, if you're going to have seats on the floor, they had to be ganged. And that's not a possibility with banquet seats. We have more than five hundred banquet chairs, but they're not suitable for ganging. So at some point in time, a few years back, we had a pretty significant ACOA grant. Part of that went towards the purchase of five hundred folding chairs to provide some audience, audience seating. So that brings us up to about fourteen hundred seats. And we were still supplementing at that time with some of the, the other chairs. But fourteen hundred enabled us to at least hold a concert. It doesn't attract big names and, but we were able to at least get some artists to come in. Also at that time, of course, Yarmouth was one stop on a circuit around the province. So a promoter, for example, from New Brunswick might bring a group to tour the province, promising them ten venues. And if he didn't make big money in Yarmouth, but he made big money in Truro and Halifax and Sydney, at least Yarmouth filled the gap of having that extra venue. So we were included in the circuit for that reason. As more and more facilities opened, and we know of, you know, in the last few years, we've had the Picta Wellness Center, the LCLC in Bridgewater, Queens Amira in Liverpool, and Rec Center in Truro, these venues became available. Yarmouth sort of became less desirable as a location because of the, the limited seating and the geographical location, just getting here. So we then moved into a model where we had the promoters offering to share the risk. Rather than just rent the facility for a concert, they said, look, you know, we'll, we'll do it. You buy, you pay for fifty percent of the show and split the expenses with us, and then we'll split the profits at the end of the day. We did that on one, one occasion, and it was, it was actually very profitable for the Mariners Center. I think in one, one day, we, we netted about eight thousand dollars on a one-night concert in an off-season. So it was a good deal. However, the next time we held a concert, now keeping in mind, we did take our rental fees out first. So the next concert that was held, we got paid, you know, three or four thousand dollars for the rental fee. But then at the end of the day, we split the expenses, the promoter lost money. So of course, that kiboshed that, that effort altogether. So basically, now where we're at, we find ourselves in a situation where if we want to bring a concert to Yarmouth, we're pretty much obliged to purchase the show. And usually, that purchase price also comes with it the cost of production and the cost of advertising. I gave you a ballpark figure and, you know, some of these decades-old country music bands, which by the way, play quite well here. We do have a, a country music audience base and a lot of support from Claire, believe it or not. They, they love that music. So it seems to be quite successful. But we don't have the, the number of seats available. And even those acts, which are, as I say, decades-old country bands, they would run you twenty-five thousand Canadian, probably for the purchase of the show. And then when you pay your advertising costs and your ticket setup, the production cost, which could run eight to ten thousand dollars, you're approaching, quickly you're approaching forty thousand dollars in, in expenses. So the risk there is that if we want to hold a show, we have to sell enough tickets to make it viable. And in order to do that, first thing we have to do is have the inadequate number of seats. Since in our budget, we don't have a, we're not allowed to take a risk and risk municipal funds. There was, the proposal was put forward that we create a concert fund, that we very carefully analyze, you know, which band or which group we think we could get and try to keep the expenses limited as much as possible. We have tried another route, and that was to partner with some of the other arenas, but the competitive nature of the business is they don't want to give up the opportunity that maybe three or four of their, their audience comes from Yarmouth County, I guess, and they don't want to jeopardize that. I really don't understand the logic, but we haven't had any success whatsoever in partnering.
Okay.
So that's where we're at.
Okay.
And if, the proposal was that if each municipal unit contributed to the pot, it would allow us, if we were able to book a concert, it would allow us some leeway to purchase some additional seating. And it would also allow for, I guess, to cover the, the risk in the event of a loss.
Okay.
Now, we would hope that there would be a profit and that the profit could be then put back into the fund to pay for the seats and, you know, everything would be great. That's an ideal situation, and that's what we hope for.
So I think you just in the last thirty seconds, I answered three of my questions. So number one, equal shares for partners. Number two, we don't need to write a check, right? This is not a, I was discussing with Jeff to get the logistics of it. We don't necessarily have to write a check. It's just up to, oh, to purchase the seating we did, yes.
Yeah, for the purchase of the seating, exactly, yes.
Okay. And, and that, and number three, that of course, when you're successful, then that just builds up your fund, gives you more ability to. So hoping that you're successful, you're just asking for a start, you know, to let's get this started.
The seating really is a chicken and egg situation where we don't, we don't need the seats if we don't have a concert.
Yeah.
But, yeah.
Okay. Okay, good. So there's some questions here.
Thank you, your worship. Awesome. I support it, Gil. I'm one of the ones that, one of the municipal politicians that you said grabbed a hold of you or brought you to one side to ask you some questions. And I know when you talk about Queen's Place and the Wellness Center in Bridgewater and the one in Berwick, I know when they came down and asked you questions about the start of the Mariners Center, I know that you were forthright and honest with the people, and they used you as a resource, right? I know the guys in, in Queen's Place were quite happy with, with that, with the help they got from Yarmouth, with the resource on, on what they needed in the building. Plus, the other thing, you know, is you can have a concert, lose a very small amount of money. And but places like Boston Pizza, Pizza Delight, Subway, the places on Stars Road are going to have a full restaurant for the, for the night before a concert, too, right? So it, it's, just because you might lose a small amount of money on a concert, it's going to generate some economic activity in the town of Yarmouth. So how many seats do you think that envisions? How much would the initial amount go towards seat, Gil? Or how much are you looking to spend on the seats part of it?
Well, ideally, we'd like, we'd like to, I think, be able to extend the offer to a promoter that we could seat eighteen hundred. That's pretty much the minimum for most.
So that'd be about six hundred seats?
We've got, we've got five hundred folding seats now and a little over nine hundred in the stands.
Okay.
So an additional four hundred would be more than adequate for the time being.
Okay. I, well, need a motion to refer to or contingent with the other municipal units contributing? I'll make that a motion for discussion.
Okay. Second. Yep, second by Wade.
I support that as well. But for those who are asking the question, because I've had, I had actually Cliff ask just a few moments ago, and for those who are listening who doesn't, who do not understand, like for example, when it came to Charlie Pride, you, you fit two thousand people in, but right now, you can only do fourteen hundred. Perhaps you could explain what the Fire Marshal did and what ganging is specifically in the seats and why you actually need the seats so that everybody understands.
Yeah. So the folding chairs that we bought are, number one, they're a wider seat and they're, they're more comfortable. You could sit in them for hours and not be uncomfortable.
They are comfortable.
And the other thing is, is that they're, they're very easily ganged. And what that means is that they have clips attached. The clips will lock the chairs together. In the event of a fire, they don't want chairs scattered all over the place that people are going to trip over. So that the seats have to be in a, a gang and at least, I think the, the longest row you can have is sixteen seats in a row. But in order to do that with banquet chairs, you would have to tie them together with like, well, number one would be labor-intensive because you'd have to put them together probably with cable ties or things like that.
Right.
But they're, the seats are that narrow that there's no three people, and I'm not suggesting anybody in this room is big, but there's no three people in this room that could sit comfortably in three banquet chairs side by side.
Tremendously uncomfortable, yeah.
It just isn't possible. So to use those, and so what we used to do is set those up, but they would be set up spaced. The, the reason I say eighteen hundred is I know that they did squeeze two thousand in for Charlie Pride. I would prefer to sell quality seating than to sell people a seat where they're sitting by the Zamboni Gate looking sideways at the stage. So, you know, you can, you know, I look at, I look at the Queens Amira floor plan and quite honestly, it baffles me that they show thirteen hundred seats on the floor. And I just don't understand how you can sell those because, you know, it wouldn't be a quality experience for anybody. So by limiting it to eighteen hundred, you also, you always hope to have fewer seats than you think you can sell. And that's just good promotion because people don't want to come and find out that they're sitting in an arena where there's five or six hundred empty seats. So if you think you can sell two thousand, then only have eighteen hundred.
Thank you.
And that's just good, good promotion.
Now, I have, I've worked with Steve Burns over at Queen's Place. As a matter of fact, there's a concert coming up there in June with the Washport Union that we're associated with. These kind of acts would, would do well here. And all we need is the ability for the Mariners Center to do it. And I think this is really important. This is a crucial thing. This is why we have the Mariners Center, not just for sports, it's for everything. And so that's my soapbox for the day.
There's a show actually coming up in Maine in, in next month that I wish we could have capitalized on. And Sammy Kershaw, who did quite well here when he was here, is playing in Truro next month. Another one that we, we couldn't take advantage of, so.
Yeah. I can see classic rock doing well here. There are a lot of things that can be done if we put our minds to it and, and put our act together.
Okay. That's the winner of the day. That is hilarious. Wade? No, you had it in you. Go ahead, counselor.
I remember Cliff's though, Wade. Get Cliff's out.
No, I was, I was looking at the last paragraph from the four hundred, fourteen hundred. So if we do this, you're going to end up with nineteen hundred?
What, what I would suggest is we have just over nine hundred seats in the, in the stands on the north side. The, actually, end zone seating is really not.
Okay, so you, you got.
We don't include that.
So you got the nine hundred and you'll have five of these.
We have, we have five hundred now of the folding, folding chairs. So we're looking for another probably three to four hundred. Probably four hundred would bring us up to eighteen hundred.
Eighteen hundred?
Yes. That would give eighteen hundred seats.
And will you be using the existing chairs for part of that?
We were until the Fire Marshal.
No, no, but going forward.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
What are you going to do with the existing chairs? Will they be part of that?
The ones that we have, the five hundred folding chairs would be included, plus the state, so we'd need an additional four hundred.
Until we end up being able to do almost the two thousand?
Yes.
Okay.
Eighteen.
Eighteen hundred. I said nineteen, it's eighteen hundred.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good stuff. So the motion, what was it, to refer to budget or to, oh, contingent? Yes, to do it, contingent on the other partners. So good? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary, motion carried. Good stuff.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gil.
Once again, thanks for your attention.
Nova Scotia Health Authority, you're going to reduce harm from substance abuse.
Can you hear me okay?
Yep, speak, grab as close as you can. Thanks, Gil.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. My name is Larry Phillips, and I'm here to talk to you about this proposed community action plan. Really excited about the opportunity, especially considering, I think this is the first time I've talked to this council about the municipal alcohol work or this community action plan for sure. I'll let this gentleman introduce himself in a moment. I just want to say a couple of things. One, I will do most of the speaking primarily because I was the creator of a lot of this, a lot of the content, although we do have an advisory group. And I'm happy to answer any questions either as we go or at the end, whichever you prefer.
I'm Lauren Question for the Municipality of Yarmouth, councillor. I got involved with this program when I first became councillor and, and I, at first, it was just going to be the alcohol and tobacco part. So I had, I suggested that we, because of the cannabis issue coming up in the near future, I thought it'd be good for us to just tie it in with the alcohol and tobacco too, because I think a lot of the, a lot of the information that's going with policies and bylaws for alcohol and tobacco can be fitted right in with the cannabis also. But, so this is why, why I'm going to here too, because I'm sitting on that committee and give Larry a little bit of support.
Thank you. So to rewind a little bit, for those who may not be familiar, the Yarmouth County Municipal Alcohol Project is the black report that you have. And a lot of this work started with that. And Phil was, Phil's the representative on our committee, and Phil was with us from day one with that. So that was the initial focus. And then on your, on the right of your screen there, the Progressive and Prosperous Report, this was something that was through UNSM approaching my health peers. And it was basically looking at, it's a municipal alcohol policy guide that looks at essentially the authority of the Municipal Governance Act and how to use that to increase safety and increase, improve health and reduce costs related to alcohol. So in May 2017, the UNSM had a forum on legalization of cannabis and what can be done municipally around that. And one of the questions I was asked was, can you use this Progressive and Prosperous Report focusing on alcohol and use that for cannabis? And the answer is basically yes. In terms of coming back to the, the local Yarmouth group and talking to them about what we were going to do with alcohol and getting in more of a direction there and bringing back this, this cannabis legalization information, that's when Lauren and Gerard, our other Modi representation, asked, started asking these questions. Why aren't we including cannabis? And it was, it changed the direction of the work, and I think in a, in a very good way because as we dug into it, we learned how progressive and innovative this, this approach So in the, these are the partners that we have with the community action plan, this proposed plan. Similar to the municipal alcohol work, we have the three municipal units involved, and that was a real strength of the municipal alcohol work. It was something that made it unique compared to other work, municipal alcohol work done in the province. And I think it's what, one of the strengths of this community action plan as well. What we're doing here is many communities face a diverse range of substance use problems, and our communities in Yarmouth are not much different. I emphasize that because I'm going to speak to it a little bit later as to the not much part. The purpose of the plan is to ultimately reduce the harms from substance use and promote the health of our residents. The plan would essentially reinforce and extend existing provincial and federal drug regulations and apply them to the specific needs and values of our community. To illustrate this, I want to provide an example around the upcoming legalization of cannabis and potentially smoking cannabis in public places and what it is that you would want to see with that. Do you want to see something where, like on, on the Yarmouth Trail, where you could smoke cannabis like you could see cigarettes being smoked, where it wouldn't be all that uncommon to see it happening? Or to treat it more like alcohol, where it would probably be surprising to see somebody on the Yarmouth Trail with an open bottle of liquor? And that's the sort of questions that we're, we're trying to deal with. And to me, that's an example of where you could have council designate smoke-free outdoor spaces where you're extending those provincial regulations and provincial. those provincial regulations and provincial bylaws to cover certain areas that the council deems that they wanted to be covered.
So...
Yeah?
So I'm, I was of the understanding that it's treated like alcohol. So you're not going to be walking down Main Street with a bottle of beer without getting a four hundred dollar fine, any more than you're going to smoke a joint on Main Street without a four hundred dollar fine?
So in terms of smoking cannabis in public places is what you're referring to?
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah. So my understanding is that's not decided yet, it's not been determined yet, but I think that that's the case. The case is that I believe you can smoke it in public places, but I don't think that's been determined yet.
I think you're right.
Pardon me?
I think you're right.
In terms of...
They had not done anything to make that worse.
Yeah.
What are you going to do about it? What are you going to do about it?
Well, I think that's a good question, and I actually think that's one of the things that we're talking about with the three municipal units here and the community groups that we have. What do we want to do about it? So I can continue. Yeah, so you could have something like this where for smoking cigarettes or smoking cannabis, you could have smoke-free outdoor spaces.
I don't think, yeah, he's, go ahead. He's presenting, he's not, he might not have all the answers, but you can ask your question.
No.
You're good? Okay. He might, he might have.
Yeah. I'll wait for it.
Yeah, well...
So the substances that we decided to include in this plan was alcohol, nicotine, and cannabis, and that's because typically these are the three substances that are either most often used or where you see the most harms. As you can see, Nova Scotians have used more cannabis and more nicotine than the Canadian average and slightly less alcohol. And I'm going to speak to how we use substances in the next slide and use alcohol as a specific example of that. But I do want to note that we didn't include illicit substances intentionally because you don't see illicit substance use tend to be greater than these three substances. So in the previous slide, I showed how Nova Scotians drank alcohol slightly less than the Canadian average. The real issue isn't that we're drinking alcohol, it's how we drink alcohol. Nova Scotians drink more heavily on average than other Canadians. The same can be said for cannabis use as well. So on this slide, you can see that the southwest area has the second highest rate of heavy drinking in the province, and that's what I was referring to earlier when I was saying that there's not much of a difference in Yarmouth. The not much is, although a lot of communities in Nova Scotia are dealing with alcohol use issues, it might be a little bit more prevalent in our area of the province because of the In terms of harms, we know through alcohol and tobacco research, it clearly shows that if you increase access to a substance, you're going to increase use, and the next step of that is if you increase use, then you tend to increase harms. So I have listed up there a few harms that could apply to any, but not necessarily all the substances, so driving while impaired, for example, that would apply for alcohol. It would apply for cannabis as well. We have, Nova Scotia has one of the higher rates, but obviously it's not going to apply The substance use problems can be a result of many complex factors. What we wanted to do was, in terms of developing the plan, to try to ground it in some principles and values and ground the actions contained therein. I'm not going to go through all of these, but I wanted to point out one that we have is flexibility, and that's because the plan is designed to be flexible. We don't want it to be constraining. We wanted to create some structure around it, but at the same time, be able to adapt it to future changes. This graphic shows the implementation process that we're proposing. So if you start off the top right, engaging communities, this is something where health promoters, myself and some of my other partners can help this, with this. We have, we have skills in this area, and we can be an asset to the municipal unit. And then when you go through conducting needs assessments, or you're identifying strengths and gaps in your community, enhancing capacity, so increasing the readiness to address the needs, and then develop and refine the plan. And these are the priority action areas that we identified. These are based upon research and sound public health protection principles that have been shown to reduce substance use in a variety of contexts. In the document, the main document that I shared with you, you'll see that each one of these has a list of actions. I'm not going to go into the specific actions just due to time, but they're meant to illustrate what the end goal would be, what we're working towards. What I would say is that the reason why we chose a lot of these actions is because the evidence shows that they're a relatively cheap and easy way to improve the health of our communities. Just by way of providing a little bit of highlights, I really wanted to emphasize that over the summer, as I started doing more research into this and talking to my peers, it really was something that was progressive and innovative. The fact that we're including these three substances, and this was at the direction of a pivotal question through Lauren and Gerard, it's what makes this truly unique. We're off to a good start in that we're already doing some things, and I tried to identify that in Appendix B in the, in the document. The plan is designed to be flexible, as I mentioned, and it's a draft. It's something that really we wanted to take the opportunity to bring this to the councils, the partners that we have involved with the advisory group, and we can change it as we So this council has been instrumental in the development of the municipal alcohol project in this area and continuing to do so with this proposed plan. What we would like is your support in working with the PAC to create and adopt a plan to reduce substance use, reduce the harms from substance use in our communities, and we're suggesting using this plan as a template for that if we find out it's helpful. We'd like to have something brought back to council by the summer, this summer, 2018, because that's when we expect the legalization of cannabis. So I hope that you see that you have a unique position here, and I welcome any questions.
Good. Go ahead.
Good job, Larry and Lauren. Just one, I've been to a couple of their sessions and listened to Dr. Robert Strang, and if you go through the, you go through the pamphlet of the book, it says, I don't think we're, one of the quotations, I don't think we're different than any other area. There's a good side and a bad side. If you took the taxes off of smoking, gambling, and booze, we'd be broke, but we know that's not the fact, right, Larry?
Yeah.
If the, the province of Nova Scotia Liquor Commission around $224 million, and the cost of alcohol to the system was about $248 million or $250 million, they estimate?
Yeah, I don't remember the exact number, but selling alcohol is not a money-making business from a provincial point of view, in that you see a lot of costs around societal costs essentially, whether it's justice or RCMP, that sort of thing. When you take those into account, it's not profitable.
And health.
And health, yes. An obvious omission considering who I work for.
Any more questions? Oh, go ahead, Sandy.
I'm sorry, I don't know a lot about marijuana or anything, because I've never taken it in my life, but when you smoke a joint or whatever, how long does that last in your
Good question. I wouldn't be the best person to ask, and that's the sort of thing where I could find that information for you.
Well, I was wondering too about, so if, I understand that when you...
Why are you pointing at me?
So, for example, alcohol is water soluble, so it's going to be out of your system.
Exactly.
The marijuana is, is not water soluble, so it's going to stay in your system...
Longer.
Yes.
For eighteen years with the RCMP drug section, right? So I just had to know that. I had to know that stuff.
So I was just wondering about, like, even if you don't take drugs and you hang out with people who do, and you go to work, and if you're tested, it's, you breathe that in, it's in your system even though you haven't...
It doesn't work that way.
It doesn't?
Sorry.
Oh, good, okay. I was told.
If you'd like me to talk about secondhand smoke, I will too.
Okay, perfect. Okay, that was my question.
And I know you got beaten up, the mayor's got beaten up on the internet and Facebook and on social media about, about the cost of implementing the cannabis legislation when it comes to policing. And were you there, Larry, in Bridgewater when they did the session? I was there, I know Warden Anthony was there, and they had, the guy from the RCMP was there, and they're talking about the cost to a municipal unit training an RCMP officer or training an officer is about $20,000 a person. The machines are about $5,000 to $6,000 apiece, and they recommend you have two, three, or four of those machines or more. And I think the cost of the test itself, so I don't know how many roadside tests it would take for alcohol in a month, but the tests themselves were running between $25 and $50 a test.
They're, and like a thousand tests a month.
And there are a thousand tests a month, so if you did a thousand tests a month at $40, that's $40,000, that's over and above what we already pay for policing, that would, that would be part of the money that we'd have to pay or account for, Jeff?
Where has we reported?
Just about the extra cost of policing for the cannabis legislation when it comes to training officers, buying the testing equipment, and paying for the testing supplies. We pay for that.
We pay for some of that.
Okay. How's it work, a percentage?
Depending on...
And is that, and you're, who's the chair of the police advisory? Is it Counselor Hood?
I'm the chair, I don't know.
Maybe I'm the chair.
You're the chair? I just wondered if that's been discussed at the police advisory too?
Not yet. Well, actually...
Part of it has?
Yes.
Sorry, Phil, or Jeff, you were going to answer a question before we, go ahead.
Yeah, so our, our contract for policing is a direct federal contract, and so within that, we pay seventy percent of the, of the cost, the cost of an officer. But above and beyond that, we pay certain specific costs related to testing, equipment, facilities, and so on. So depending on how this shakes out, training is not normally something we pay additional for, but if they have to call somebody in on overtime to cover for when somebody's off on training, that is a cost that we do pay.
And now that they have the legislations coming in the courts, they're probably doing that training that the depot is left out there.
I don't know the answer to that. One of the things, you know, that you talked about whether this would be regulated like alcohol or regulated like smoking, and I know we've talked about it at this table, having a restrictive bylaw around, around cigarette smoke. And the issue we've talked about around that is the enforcement. We can put up signs, you know, please don't smoke public space, but it builds an expectation and then an expectation of enforcement. Well, currently, you talk about costs, currently we have a bylaw enforcement officer who works a regular work week, and that's not typically the time when you're going to find people, I don't think, people indulging in marijuana in parks and public places. And so you might be looking at a demand, if it were regulated like smoke, a demand on the town to have enforcement officers in off hours to, to help to regulate this. If it is regulated like alcohol, well, alcohol violations are not regulated by the bylaw enforcement officer, they're regulated by the RCMP in the town. And so then that would be an additional burden on them, and part of my understanding about the legalization was that there would be reduced police costs, but in fact, if they're still going to be chasing kids around to take joints out of their hands, I'm not sure how they're going to realize the cost savings.
Is there, is there an opportunity to respond, or...
Yeah, go ahead, please.
I think it's a great illustration of how complicated it can be, and although this approach I've been saying is very unique, it's also illustrates how complicated it is when you throw alcohol and tobacco into the mix as well, when we're trying to create a plan to address all three. The one thing I would say with that is, from what we know of, from what I know of some evidence around smoking, it doesn't necessarily have to go as far as the bylaw officer, if it was, if we're playing with hypotheticals. I know there's evidence in Bridgewater, when they introduced their smoke-free outdoor space, the fact that there was signage, it was essentially self-policing. So it gave people the ability to say, hey, you know what, we'd appreciate if that, if you didn't smoke here when there's a soccer game or something like that going on, so you're able to point to the sign, or people just simply didn't smoke because they saw that it was a no-smoking, no-smoking place. Two things with that, I mean, I'm not saying everyone's going to do that, so it's not going to work in all situations, and I can't, I can't extend that evidence to smoking cannabis either. You pointed out some differences there as well, Jeff.
Good.
Implementing this thing would be expensive, and it's a bureaucratic, it's a, it's a load on our established bureaucratic ability to, it's a detailed thing. But there's, there's one thing that would be a no-brainer, I think, and that would be to have the province come out and make sure in their legislation that the Smoke-Free Places Act is mirrored with respect to the consumption of marijuana, hashish, and other smoke-like products, I think the, what do you call them, the other things they smoke. And if you can pick anything out of this, that probably is the most effective one. I just, there was a simple way they could have done this. They could have amended the Criminal Records Act and wiped out all the criminal records for people that got busted with under X number of grams of marijuana, and they could have established a summary conviction offense which didn't require all those big expensive tests that the RCMP had to do.
Well, you decriminalize and...
And make it a three hundred and whatever it is, $75, I think, fine, the same as it is for liquor. Should do that anyway. They should, that's the other thing they should do. Now, you can't have a can of liquor sitting out here on the street, open, and not pay a $375 fine if someone chooses to enforce it, and it should be the same thing for marijuana. We used to do that when we prosecuted. I was a federal prosecutor for that stuff for ten years, only lost one case. One case is all I ever lost.
Might have been my case.
And I had the judges convinced to fine people $375 around here until the hippies came in and took over, and everybody just forgets about it. There we go. But seriously, I want, I'd like to shake people and say this. Do you realize that you cannot grow a tobacco plant in your backyard legally, and you're going to be able to grow, if you're a husband and wife, eight marijuana plants? Now, isn't there something stupid about that?
Something stupid about the whole thing. You're right.
Nothing but a damn vote grab, far as I can see.
We've, we've had some conversations before. I respect the, the experience in the room. The one thing I would say, there's a few things there, but the one thing I would say is, in terms of the cost with this plan, there's no expected cost, there's not, that's not part of the ask, it's not something that's with the three municipal units and the partners around the table. I'm not saying that there is no cost, but we're not expecting costs, and so to, so that's not part of what I was trying to talk about with the, the flexibility of the plan. I don't want councillors, I don't want any of the municipal units to feel like you're boxed in or you're entering something that there's going to be surprises. So that's not my expectation.
No, we don't think that at all.
So are you advocating to have the province implement some additional regulations like the Smoke-Free Places Act, or is it for us?
Advocating to the province, no. What I'm suggesting with that example that I provided is that there's, there's things, there's tools that you have available to you that you can use locally. So I'm suggesting that it's an option, and that's, again, part of what I think the plan is about.
You should be trying to convince the province to do its job on some...
If you want to try to convince the province to do things, sure, but that's not what I'm suggesting right now. I think, I think advocacy is definitely a role, but it's not necessarily one, it's one, in terms of the plan, I think it's something that either all three municipal units as a group, which is what has been done so far, or individually, if you prefer, to take on those roles, those actions.
Should we try to do a modified bylaw for municipal government to make it permanent?
Well, that's, that's, there's your advocacy, right? And I'm on the UNSM executive. So yes, that's, we're just putting our concerns forward. Costs, first of all, because it's going to be, it's going to be big, but yeah, the rules as well.
For the RCMP part, I mean? Sorry, what was...
Yeah, the RCMP costs, not just the RCMP costs, like Counselor Hood was saying, you know, on a bureaucratic level, somebody's got to write these rules for us, somebody, it's, it's all time, right? And time is money, so...
And opportunity costs for our CMP too. If you're chasing cannabis cases, then they're not obviously able to do other crimes.
Exactly. Lauren?
Yeah, thank you. Counselor Hood and the mayor and the rest have expressed concerns about the cost... Councilor Hood and the Mayor and the rest have expressed concerns about the cost and whatnot. Our scope of this document wasn't to come up with cost. We all know what's gonna, the end result's gonna be, we're gonna be labeled with the cost. But we felt that this document would be a help for the municipal councils, town councils, to create some policies and perhaps some bylaws with this type of information. Once the province and the feds have come up with a, this is what you're gonna do, well, this could be a good ground base to start with in our three councils.
Good stuff.
So we have some type of control of our destiny hopefully, but the cost is, well we all know what's gonna happen there.
It is gonna happen.
Lauren, do you think we have to have the same bylaws in Yarmouth Town, Yarmouth Argyle, and Yarmouth Municipality?
Yes.
Yes, I agree with that 100%, and that's what the document is for. It's to see if we can use the same type of information to develop our same, everybody's on the same page. So in other words, if they go to the municipality of Yarmouth, they can do one thing, if they go to Argyle, they can do another, then you come to town. No, it's gonna be, no matter where you are in the three municipalities, this is what you have to do. So that's our, I believe our base of our scope was.
That's, I agree with that. Should be province-wide, but somebody's gotta set the bar, somebody will set the bar. So thanks gentlemen, very much for coming in and sharing that with us.
It's a good thing I didn't swear, I accidentally powered down. I meant to escape.
That's okay.
Thanks guys.
Thank you, sorry for that.
Okay, staff reports. What do you wonder?
If the feds have some on that, if the feds have not legalized marijuana, will you attend to this presentation or concern?
Yes, because they're doing alcohol and marijuana, alcohol and tobacco? Oh, we're not spending anything? Somebody is, yeah, not us, that's good. Yeah, it's good to have local information. Oh, I know, so am I, it's a mess, it's a mess. Yeah. All they had to do, and they didn't, all they had to do was decriminalize it instead of legalizing it. Exactly, so nobody, just like getting caught with beer, right? Big deal. Okay, so we're good there, so, okay, we're on to staff reports. CAO, oh, budget prep, are you doing budget preparation with us? Okay. It's cold in here, like how do you, if you turn it on? Wade's having hot flashes. Thank you Larry. Okay, so, are we all ready to pay attention to the CAO? Cause you're on camera, okay. So go ahead there, we're doing budget preparation, so you've got a document anyway.
Okay, so it's also available on the screen, hopefully you can read it. So what I have been doing every year for a number of years is prior to getting into the operational budget preparation, I do a, what I hope is a fairly quick presentation of some indicators, both internal and external, to give you an idea, to give you some sense of how we're doing as a community, as a town, kind of context for setting the operational budget. And also kind of a checkup, generally how are we doing? So I've got a number of slides here and I'll try and run through them fairly quickly. If you have any questions as I'm running through them, please don't hesitate to stop me.
Okay.
Okay, so just first of all, County Yarmouth is the fifth largest town in Nova Scotia by population. Larger towns are Truro, New Glasgow, Bridgewater, and Amherst. So of the 27 towns in the province of Nova Scotia, we are the fifth largest by population. When you compare us to the average town, that's when you take the 27 and you average them together, the average town has 1,924 dwellings, we have just under 3,500, so significantly larger in that sense. However, geographically, we are approximately equal in square kilometers to the average town. Our total operating budget for fiscal year, the town average is 7.6 million, ours is 17.3 million. So from a fiscal perspective, our budget is significantly larger than the average town, more than double.
All right, you've got towns out there that have 200 and 400 people.
Right, there are some, well, the smallest one I think is in Apples Royal or Clark's Harbor and they're around 400 people, yeah. So taxable property assessment, so the average town is 240 million. Our taxable property assessment's just over 400 million. Size of council is seven councillors, so towns either have five or seven. And again, we're one of the larger towns, it kind of makes sense that we would be among the group that has seven. Revenue sources don't differ much from other towns. One of the things that does differ is the revenue from own sources. We operate a compost facility, which generates a significant amount of revenue, about a million dollars a year. And so that differentiates us generally from most towns. On the expense side, the, one of the expense areas that is larger for us is environmental development. And the reason that area is, I think stands out as larger than other towns is because of the number of partnerships that we have. So the funding that we put into our shared corporations, we book that under that environmental development section of our budget.
I can't, is that like 12%?
That is 12% compared to 4% on the average town.
Wow.
Demographics, so this is just general population trends. Our population's been stable, obviously since the last census, or apparently since the last census. But it appears here that the town average has actually gone up. What's happened is three of the smaller towns have dissolved. And so just because you're not counting those three anymore in the group, the average has bumped up slightly. So that's a little bit misleading, but it's a provincial table and I threw it in there. So the age profile of the town of Yarmouth, and I've used this slide in the past, but just to reemphasize the point, is if you look at the school age demographics within the town, so the town of Yarmouth is the yellow lines versus the blue lines, which is the provincial average. Again, this is provincial average, not town average at this point. We have a, we're higher than the provincial average in terms of percentage of our population falling in some of the younger demographics. So zero to four and 15 to 19-year-olds. However, we are below the provincial average from about the age of 20 to the age of 64. So your working, your traditional working age demographics, we have a lower percent of our population throughout that entire portion of life. Then when you get beyond 65, when you get up to 70 years plus, our orange lines are considerably higher than the provincial average. So what does that, that tells me, or I like to infer from that, that people in our county, in our region, when they reach those years where they may want more easy access to services and whatnot, that they migrate into the town, take advantage of the sidewalks, take advantage of the proximity of services such as health and whatnot, so.
You know what else it tells me?
What does it tell you?
We have such a great quality of life that people come here so they can live longer. Right, I know, we're double. I agree Wade.
Okay, so.
We like the sunny side of this.
We'll keep moving, so annual, Nova Scotia's annual report of municipal statistics for 15, 16, this is the most recent they have available, shows population trends in five regions of the province. And only the Valley and Halifax had upward movement on their population. The three other regions, North, South, and Cape Breton, all had slightly downward trends. So just internally indicators, so some of the data that we generate internally kind of helps us to sort of understand what's going on. So just quickly run through these. We do have the sixth largest tax base among towns. So Kenfield, which is smaller than us by population, has a slightly higher tax base. We have the fourth largest commercial taxable assessment, only behind Truro, New Glasgow, and Bridgewater. And only Truro, Wolfville, and Annie Ganesh have more commercial exempt property, two of them have universities. And I say that that's an indicator that we are a regional service center. So things like hospitals, schools, courthouses, government institutions are things that you typically find in a service center. And I think we have a lot of that in the town of Yarmouth and that.
Yeah, we do.
Accounts for a large portion of the commercial exempt. We also happen to own all those wharves on the waterfront jointly with our partners and a ferry terminal and all that is commercially exempt. Residential taxable assessment. Okay, so the blue line, the upper line, is market assessment. So this is residential property market assessment from 2008 to the coming fiscal year 1819. And so you can see that in the early years, it climbed significantly. That was due to a reassessment within the town and I guess better financial times. It then declined and now the last couple of years, it started to pick back up. The green line, the lower line, is actually the taxable assessment. And the difference between the green line and the blue line is the cap.
The cap.
The cap, right. So as things were going upward, on the upward side in the 2008 to 2013, as assessments were going up, the gap was widening. In other words, some of that growth, we were not realizing in tax revenue. Then as assessments started to decline, you can see the cap narrowed, there was less cap. So people started to pay taxes on some of that capped assessment, to the point in 2017, it was almost non-existent. And in fact, the town of Yarmouth, when you look at all the municipalities and how much assessment is capped, we are at the absolute bottom. We have less capped assessment than any other municipality in the province. But as you can see in the last couple of years, including this coming fiscal year, that gap is starting to widen out again, starting to. So that's a good thing from the perspective that that means that the market is showing some strength. And we should be happy about that, less happy that the cap distorts the market and some people pay more taxes than others for factors other than the value of their property. Residential tax rates, so you can see from 2006 to 2018, 1718, this past fiscal year, residential tax rates have come down. Now a couple of those steps down were actually decisions by council to reduce the residential tax rate simply for the purpose of reducing the rate since we were doing fine financially. The last few years that the rate has dropped, that has been offset by an increase in the sewer rates. So that, those last few years, that steeper dive has been picked up in the revenue side from the sewer rates. So people have a little bit more control over their sewer rate by conserving water. But just to be clear, that isn't a free and clear reduction in what a consumer pays. This is another slide on the capped assessment, it just sort of shows you the value of the taxation that is not taxed under the cap system. And you can see again, recent years, that's starting to turn upwards again. So right now, there, in this current fiscal year, there'll be about $5 million in residential assessment that will not be subject to property taxation. In commercial assessment, this is what it looks like since 2005. And you can see that we enjoyed a period of growth and then we had a period of decline. And it's been relatively slow growth in the last five or six years. But it isn't an upward trend and that's nice to see. It's, some of that is market and some of that is new development. And what I mean by market is, if you have the same property through the years, a market growth means your existing property is worth more versus growth, which would be, you build a new building or you build an addition.
But steep climb would probably say it was due to one big project or something.
No, no, I, it's, these are large numbers, you're up in around, you know, $120 to $140 million. It would take a very large project to shift that chart on its own.
That's good.
Yep. So commercial tax rates, same kind of story, there was a bump in 2011. That was the last year of the phase out of the business occupancy tax. So financial institutions were taxed to business occupancy until 2011. When that was phased out, we increased the commercial tax rate to offset that. And then beginning in 2014, again the phase out of the subsidy to the sewer rate, we began to reduce the tax rate and increase the sewer rate. Taxes receivable, this is a good news story. You can see in about 2011, we were about $1.3 million in taxes receivable at the end of the fiscal year, which meant all those taxes were in arrears at that point. That was just around 10% of our total tax levy, just over 10%. So council did a couple of things to help us with bringing that down. One is a tax sale policy and the other one was, actually both were tax sale policies. We maintained a relatively high interest rate, we shortened the time that you could be in arrears before going to tax sale. And that's allowed us now, our taxes outstanding are below $600,000, which is very good. You'll see in a later slide that our arrears appear to be a little higher than what this would indicate. And that's because when the province does the calculation, they include any sewer rates that are outstanding or receivable as they consider that tax where we don't. Those are billed every month, there's somebody being billed for sewer. And so you could have somebody whose bill is current, but we still have a receivable till the end of the month. The province counts that as taxes receivable.
I have a question, when they do the FCI's.
Yes.
Is that a standard across, obviously what the province does is standard, but is what the towns and municipal units do standard, that we don't consider it a tax? Do all the other?
No, it's not, unfortunately, it's a bit of a variety of methods. So we were, up until a few years ago, we were charging a sewer rate and we were charging, some of our property tax was going to pay for the cost of sewer. We've gotten rid of the property tax portion and brought down the tax rate. There are some municipalities that charge a flat rate for water, that they don't even meter water and have a water rate. They charge everybody the same. And they charge, and they pay for their entire sewer cost out of the general tax rate. So it is, it's a mishmash across the province. Halifax, their sewer rates are regulated by the utility review board because they're within the utility. So it's a bit of a mixed bag, but we, I like the system that we have, I think it's fair. And it gives the, some transparency, gives the property owner a little bit of control over the cost if they can conserve water. And I think shares the cost fairly among all the users, commercial and residential. So taxes receivable ratio, this is just expressed as a percentage, we're below 6% on our receivables. Detransfer tax, so we've had detransfer tax since 2003, partly through, partway through the year it was implemented. And that year, we collected $41,000. As you can see, it's been an up and down sort of situation. In some of those years where we have higher peaks, there were single transactions between related companies that resulted in a lot of detransfer tax, sort of corporate reorganization, detransfer tax to the town. I guess I take some comfort in looking at 2016 and 17, they're two of our best years since 2009. And they aren't supported by a single large transaction, they're just general property transactions. It is good, yeah. I think it's confidence in the market, at least it's activity in the market. So this is a good news slide. This is the room marketing levy, so that was implemented in two thousand seven. And each year we, we collect two dollars per room night sold in the larger properties in the town. Just these last two years, we have gotten at, at and above the one hundred thousand dollar per year mark, which is going back to two thousand seven, I think we thought that's where it would be. And with the changes in the ferry service and so on through the years, that number, that number dipped quite significantly. So this is, this is good news. It signs of, of growth or strength in that, in that sector. This is a new chart you've never seen before. Let me try to explain it. So I took all of the sales that, sales data that was available to me through viewpoint. So viewpoint has all the MLS sales available online. Anybody can go and collect this data if they wish. And I ordered them by the variance from the sale. So there's a difference between the sales price and your assessed value. And so I ordered these based on the amount of variance between those two numbers. So the top one is a negative seventy percent. That means that that property sold seventy percent below assessment. If you go down to the very bottom, sale number seventy eight, it's not labeled as such, but it sold at almost sixty percent above assessment. And so all of the little blue lines in between are all, each blue line represents a sale. So a couple of things I think are interesting here is that more property sold above assessment than sold below assessment. Overall, the average this year was two percent. The average property in the town of Yarmouth sold two percent above assessment. And that's the first time since I've been presenting these charts to council that that number has been positive. So that's a good thing.
I'm writing it down. I know we had this discussion last week.
More property sold above assessment than below. And well, you see the distribution there. So I have a. Do I share it with them? No, actually I can, I can get the data from them. They have a, they have a. Right, so, so viewpoint gets their data and lays it on their, on their platform. And so I just pick it up from viewpoint because I'm, I'm not a great data, data whiz. So it's just easier for me to grab it from viewpoint. But it is PVSC data.
So I have a, I have a question. Were you finished with your question?
Yeah, I was, I was just commenting. Pretty much, pretty consistent with my monitor.
Yeah, it's only about two percent overall. Two percent overall, but it is positive, which, you know, we, I've done this before and done the calculations in years past and the number's been like negative fourteen, negative eighteen. So the average property is selling eighteen percent below assessment. You're trying to remortgage and so they're going to get appraisals. You know, there's a huge loss in personal equity, right? Huge hit there we had. And, and so this number is positive now is, is, is good news. I think that, that should, that should translate or maybe has translated into confidence in the market. That's what I hope I see.
Yeah, me too. I was gonna ask the number, but I think, cause I'm trying to do that grade six math, thirty one over six equals what percentage? I'm getting sixty, or forty. So forty percent is below, sixty percent is above.
Yeah, it's close to that. It's, it's, it's about sale number thirty one, thirty two, thirty three, somewhere like that. I can get you the actual numbers, but just going from this chart, and there are seventy eight sales represented there.
Okay. Yeah, so it's thirty, yeah.
So the next chart I think is, is, is interesting. So this is every sale and this is ordered by sale price. So every sale, I show the sale price in blue and the assessment of that same property right next to it in red. And so if you kinda look across at the hundred thousand dollar line and you come across to where, where that sort of hits the, where the sale prices are, if you look to the, to the, to the left of that, there are a lot of red spikies. Red spikes that stand sort of above the curve.
Well, these are sort of like tax sale things, almost.
So, so what that tells me is if a property sold below a hundred thousand dollars, it is more likely that it sold significantly below assessment. More likely, but less than half, more likely. If it sold for over a hundred thousand dollars, you see blue spikies. Few red spikies, but more blue spikies, which mean if it sold for over a hundred thousand dollars, there's a greater chance, a much greater chance that it sold above assessment. It's about a year. So again, I took it from viewpoint and, and I don't know, you know, at what point do they, do they curate their, their data and take property sales off, but it's, it's within the last year.
The province has gone, or PVSC has gone to a one-year pace.
Right. Right.
Which is what?
Yeah, I didn't realize that. I didn't realize that. So, so we always had that discussion, but whatever we're seeing, we're two years behind? And now they caught up?
We're one year behind.
That's really good. Man, you put Cliff on a committee and everything.
Okay, I wanna talk quickly about the FCI.
Okay.
So this is the, this is the provincial municipal indicators. It's a set of about twenty metrics. Some of them they've discontinued. They are interesting for discussion, they are not perfect.
That's true.
And they are not intended to be perfect. They're just simply intended to, to give you some information, some context and maybe some food for thought. So revenue indicators. So I'm showing here the draft sixteen seventeen. So these would be indicators from, from last fiscal year. They're still draft, they haven't finalized ours yet, but I'm gonna use them nonetheless. So reliance on, on government. So what this represents is the percentage of our budget that we receive from grants from higher levels of government. So this past, or sixteen seventeen, the number was five point nine. And if you just looked at it, it would say, hey, we're becoming more dependent on, on provincial or federal government. That's not actually the case. We aren't more dependent on them. We were perhaps more successful in, in attracting some grants for some of the things we were doing. So I don't like the word reliance. I prefer to express it in, in terms of this is the percentage of, of our revenue that came from provincial, federal sources. Unclected taxes, you can see the number seven point two percent, which is higher than the approximately six percent we talked about earlier, that I think account, is accounted for by the inclusion of, of rates that are not covered in our taxes. But when, when the province calculates this, they bring sewer, sewer receivables in, most of which is, is current. But we bill every month, a third of the town for, for sewer. Three-year change in tax base, that's a negative number and that's, that should be of concern. They, they didn't set the, the, what do you call, the, the benchmark in two thousand sixteen at the time I produced this chart. However, I'm sure it was above zero, so, so we were below the benchmark. Commercial property, this is the percentage of, of the property within the, within the town that is assessed commercial. And ours is thirty two point zero nine percent. Anything above twenty is considered to be very good for a town. And you can see if we were rural, it would be above ten percent. It's kind of, I don't know how much that, that specific indicator means, but as a regional center, you would expect that number to be fairly, fairly high. Indicator number five is reliance on, and it should say a single taxpayer. So our largest taxpayer in the town of Yarmouth pays four point two percent of our entire tax levy, which is significant. The threshold is anywhere below, below ten percent and we're obviously well below that. The reason that's an indicator is that some, some small towns and some of them have not, have not survived. But some small towns are so dependent on a single business that a business decides they're want, gonna wind up and the town, town is in, in deep, deep trouble. Sorry? I'd have to look it up. I didn't, I didn't look it up to figure out which one it is. Yep, it's gotten smaller, yep. So budget indicators, residential tax effort. So what that is, is that's the, the average residential tax bill as a percentage of the average household income, according to Stats Canada. So for our draft indicator sixteen seventeen, it's four point three percent. And that's a good thing. The threshold or where they'd like to see it is below four percent. And you can see we've been, we've been above that. One of the interesting things you may find interesting that, that you'll see in a slide or two is that our average family, average household income is, is well below the provincial average. And a couple of years ago, I, I did the math just for fun to see what would our number be if the average household income in Yarmouth was at the provincial average and we were below four. So what is driving that indicator in the red is that our residential tax rate is about average in, in the province, but our household income is, is below. Number of deficits in the last five years, so we always talk about we're not allowed to run deficits. But sometimes we do have deficits and sometimes, you know, a ten thousand dollar deficit is a deficit. Right, so we have had one in the last five years. Oops. What happened there? Okay, sorry about that. Budget expenditure accuracy. And so the draft indicator is, is one percent. We don't like this indicator because it is all about the expense side. So if we receive a grant or we take on an initiative part, partway through the year that we didn't budget for, it affects this indicator. If we save significant money on something, but we had budgeted to spend it, we get a, we get, we can be out by more than five percent.
So are we talking to, is AMA talking to municipal affairs?
Yes, we always talk. We always talk.
You are so diplomatic.
What about Jeff? As you said, I think the last time we sat together about, about all the projects we got out the door last year, like we did almost all of them.
Yeah, yeah.
Like so what happens if municipal unit?
Go right ahead, yeah, please.
So what happens if a municipal unit budgets its budgets, according to these indicators, budgets a million dollars for capital improvements or programs and they only get three hundred thousand out the door? How does that work?
Well, you would have a positive variance, but it, but it would be a variance greater than, you know, depending on the size of your budget.
Yeah.
You know, if you're a very small town and you have that situation, you could end up with a yellow or a red indicator. So the implication or the suggestion would be is, well, you must be overtaxing because you've had such a, such a huge, you know, bottom line for the year. But that bottom line is committed, right? It's committed might be expensed the next year. So it's, again, we don't love these indicators, but they, they allow this conversation to happen.
Good.
Okay?
Yeah, sure.
So liquidity ratio is current assets over current liabilities. And you can see that we're in, we're in very good shape that way. Operating reserves, we are at sixteen point one percent, which is below where we have been. And, and again, these are draft and I, I haven't gone over the, I haven't talked to Jerry about exactly what's in the numbers, but there is, there is a possibility that they're counting things a little wonky, but anyway, sixteen point one percent. Debt servicing, so they've changed in the debt and capital section, they've, they've actually discontinued three of the indicators, which is kinda saddens us because we've always done quite well in the section of the indicators. It's where we put a lot of emphasis. And so just as an example, the debt service, they have us at three point six percent. Meaning three point six of our, of our revenue goes to service debt. I have no idea why that's up because as council knows, we haven't taken on any new debt. So I, I'm at a loss as to why that number is up. So again, draft indicator, that may be subject to some, some change. Outstanding debt is no longer an indicator, but as I said, we've been taking no further debt. We've been paying down our debt and so we'd be below the point six that you see in the last year. Undepreciated assets, we, we hate this indicator, although they've kept it. Because what it measures is the percentage of your, of you, I, I don't remember the formula, I apologize. But we calculated that we would have to spend eight to nine million dollars a year on capital in order for this indicator to, to swing upward. The calc, the formula is, is, it's a wrong formula. I understand what they're trying to calculate, but the formula they're using gives you something else. And so as good as we do, as, as good as we do investing in our capital, ours keeps going down. And so we, we saw this a few years ago, Jerry and I dug into the formula and the formula is flawed. We've had the conversation, the indicator.
I certainly had it.
The indicator persists. Five-year capital purchases, they no longer calculate that. And five-year contribution to, I believe that was to capital reserves. And they no longer calculate that. So the Nova Scotia Annual Report of Municipal Statistics for fifteen sixteen, I mentioned before, we're fourth among, sorry, I did mention this, we're fourth among the twenty seven towns in total financial assets. That's cash, receivables and investments. And what, what I think is, is interesting about this is I, I dug a little deeper into the numbers. And Bridgewater, I don't believe they're actually above us. And I called our municipal advisor and I said, can you take a look at how this is calculated? I think there's an error. He had already identified it and was, was working on it. So the difference between Bridgewater and, and everybody else is how they do their consolidation. You know that we have to consolidate the industrial commission, YAST, all the, the waste park, the water utility into the town statement. So they have a water utility and they have a waste park. And they consolidate. When we consolidate, we bring in all of the revenue, all of the expenses, all of the assets and all of the liabilities into our income statement and balance sheet. And, and it blends everything together. What they do is they just bring in the owner's equity onto the balance sheet. To make matters worse, they bring the owner's equity in as a financial asset. And it is largely fixed assets that would be coming in. So your waste park infrastructure, your water utility plant and, and equipment and pipes. But they bring it in as a financial asset. So they're on this, on this metric, they're off the charts. But it isn't, it isn't actually reflective of, of reality. And so the summary is, I'm telling you, I think we're, we're the third among twenty seven towns in terms of total financial assets.
Thank you.
Like comparing apples to asparagus.
These, I know this is different, but these indicators, same thing, right? Like just do what you wanna do and land somewhere on the chart. It's ridiculous.
Well, you can, you can game the indicators a bit. If, if they're that important to you, you can, you can make decisions in policy and in administration that can change the numbers, change how you look.
But what's important in my seat, cause you know me, cause we talk about it all the, it's about, either it's standard across the board or it's about doing the right thing the right way.
Right, so, so, so we talk about the indicators some. We, we talked about them a lot during the fiscal review process because the province was proposing to actually what I, what we call weaponize the indicators. In other words, they would use those indicators and the outcomes of those indicators. And there would be consequences to municipalities that, that didn't finish with so many greens. Or if you had too many red indicators, you'd be subject to, to action from the province. And, and so, which was never the intention. So we became much more concerned about how they were calculating these things and what they were actually showing and how susceptible they were to manipulation. So in that process, you know, we, we saw a lot of things that caused us to say, well, if they're not weaponized, then they're great for conversation. But if they are weaponized, then they have to change. Such is the case with this report. If you just simply look at it and, you know, you'd say, well, gee, town of Bridgewater is doing great. But if, so they were second among towns on the total financial assets. If you looked at the data the way it is, if you adjusted it for the, for the way they consolidate, they were, they were among the very worst among towns. So it was a huge, I mean, a fifteen million dollar swing in their, in their assets. A huge difference on the bottom line. Anyway, it's just, when you're trying to compare towns or municipalities, it's, it's kinda. of, it's tricky business because no two towns are exactly the same, but we should be doing certain things the same, right?
Yeah, if you're going to, if you're going to grade something, then it needs to be graded, like Dawn in the high school, you can't give ten different tests out, right? Well, maybe you do.
You know, there's, there's nothing, there was nothing incorrect in the way that, that Bridgewater did their consolidation, it is a way to do it. What, the problem is, is when you put them all on a chart together, what you're, what you're inviting is comparison.
Exactly.
And so when you invite comparison and, and the, and the, the data is not comparable.
So it's either apples to apples or just don't put it in there. That's where I go.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
Sorry, thank you.
Nope.
I know, it's so cold and my hands are blue.
So Dave's in Mexico, yes.
Okay, Linda said, okay, go ahead, Jeff, sorry.
Okay, so among the twenty-seven towns, we are thirteenth among towns in terms of long-term debt, so twelve of the twenty-seven are carrying more long-term debt than we are. We are eleventh in terms of financial liabilities, so ten have more financial liabilities than we do. We're third among towns in net financial assets, that's assets minus debt.
Are we second really?
Uh, no.
Third.
Okay.
Uh, sure, uh, yeah, yeah.
We're second really.
We're second the way we, we count, yeah.
Okay, who's got more than us? Truro?
Kenfield. So Kenfield used to have their own electrical util, utility, and they sold it for, I think they're carrying on the books a reserve or a fund of about fifteen million dollars as an investment, so that, that improves their net financial assets significantly.
They have the same thing in there, they had an infrastructure, they had a utility there.
I think they still have a utility there.
Do they?
Yeah. Yeah.
Truwick?
There's four or five or six that have electric utilities, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, and we're gonna talk about the utilities a little later on the agenda.
All right.
Um, third in capital assets, so among the twenty-seven towns, we have the third most in terms of capital assets on our books, and that is both at, at cost as well as net of depreciation.
So is that fair?
That's good.
Yeah, no, it's good, but I'm just saying, is it, is the formula?
Yes, yes, I think it is fair.
Is this reflective?
Yes, I, I think this is, this is a fair reflection and a, and a comparable statistic. And we're, we're third in accumulated surplus behind Truro and Bridgewater, and that also is comparable because it takes into account capital assets as well as financial assets.
Okay.
So I would argue that, that in, in the case of Bridgewater, they bring in their net equity as a financial asset where it really is a, is a capital asset. In this calculation, it, it doesn't matter, it, they both hit the bottom line the same way. This is accumulated surplus, so it is not cash, it is investment, largely investment in your infrastructure. Undepreciated investment in your infrastructure. It's a good thing.
Cold.
So infrastructure deficit, my last slide, my last slide. I always include this one because I think it's, it's really important. So our infrastructures we talk about is our pipes, our plants, our streets, our buildings, and our equipment. In two thousand and seven, and I'll have to get some more up-to-date figures, but in two thousand and seven, FCM estimated the, the infrastructure deficit carried by municipalities as a hundred and twenty-three billion dollars. The town of Yarmouth owns a piece of that, you know, some of our, some of our infrastructure is, is in need of replacement, has, is past its best before date, so we own a piece of it. But what's different about us is that since two thousand and five, we have been investing more in our infrastructure than our depreciation. So we have been reducing the size of our, our infrastructure deficit. And so the final one, and I tried to give these numbers off the top of my head at our last meeting, but here are the real numbers, and I think I got them right when I cited them the other day. In the past thirteen years, invested thirty-seven point six million dollars in our infrastructure while reducing our debt, our debt, our outstanding debt from four point eight million to two point two million. So you add those two things together, and that's darn close to forty million dollars to the good on infrastructure.
Congratulations.
Well, congratulations to you because the, you know, staff spend the money, but, but council approves the budget, and this is part of the budgeting process.
So.
I'm not gonna answer that one, Jerry.
Let me tell you something. The reason you or Jim can't be hurt is because, because you're both physically fit.
We've already slammed Jim once today, you gotta give him another shot, we.
Right, okay. So thank you, Jeff.
Give another one.
Good. Okay, any questions on the CAO report, aside from the budget one? You can always find Jeff after, oh, I put that over the file. There you go, Jim.
Way back in, I made a motion, turn to the second page, third item down, committee of the whole, deputy mayor McLeod. Make it disappear.
The letter from the town of Victoria regarding an FCM resolution. Federal Bill of Environmental Rights, yeah, let's just, so you're not interested in that anymore?
I wasn't interested in the first place.
Show Bodie that it's worth. For his day.
I mean, we've got a lot of things on here we can get rid of, but we'll talk about that later. Okay? Yeah, we're ordering breakfast. What's going on, chief?
Reports attached, if there's any questions.
There better be questions, you've been sitting here for two hours.
He's in charge.
Put a fire on here, John, get, get a fire going up.
It's so cold in here. So are you good? Everybody good with this?
Yeah.
Thank you, chief. Thank you.
How's the, how's the, what's the story on the new truck there? We got that thing all the way, we got the.
Four cheese probably starving.
Well, we spent twice as much as you guys said it was okay to do, so we just decided to go ahead anyways.
We'd probably still say yes.
It's, it's, it's been ordered and everything, and everything's ready to go, they're building it, and, and it should be.
What kind of, what kind of communication do you have back and forth during the process?
With the builder, the person who's running the project basically talks with the actual engineer that's building the truck, and if there's any questions, they call back and forth constantly, because there's always issues when you're building a custom truck.
Is there some things by one of those off the rack?
You, you can buy some from very big companies off the rack, but you never get what you need.
Okay, is there something we're gonna be missing out on?
Oh, yeah.
Good.
I just, just a quick comment.
Yes, that's true, yeah.
So, so we're being tactically pursuing a fire protection.
Yes, we are.
Oh my gosh, it's so bad. Like, I'm literally, my hands are blue. Okay, Jim, you're gonna ask a question.
I, I, not a, not a question, John, just a, a comment. I like the reports, they're interesting and, and I like reading them, so keep it up. They're different reports than we've had in the past, so thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So, thank you, chief. Go have supper.
All right, I'm not rushing away because I don't want to be here, I just have to get ready for training because I'm giving it tonight, so.
No, listen, you're always here, thank you. Um, okay, so I have a question. Do you have something to present to us? Caroline?
Uh, no.
Okay, hang on one second. Frank, you're up, how about that? I know you've got small children at home as well, so.
Well, they're, they're already at the gym, so I, I'm, I'm.
Okay, well, you can step back and wait.
I'm, I'm pick her upper.
Step back and wait your turn.
I'll, I'll just be brief. I'm, I'm sorry I didn't circulate a report for this meeting, but I did want to mention that we've picked the town of Yarmouth's volunteer representative to attend provincial ceremonies. Her name is Annette Saret. If you don't know who Annette is, I'm sure you'll be hearing lots about her in the next couple of weeks, and that has volunteered over fifty-six hundred hours at the cancer care clinic at the Yarmouth Regional Hospital, so she'll be attending with our municipal volunteer representative, Tony Dorian. He was selected as well, and we're looking forward to a great Yarmouth volunteer reception. The, we always have the reception here in council chambers, but the numbers of nominations this year is going through the roof, so we're almost to the point, and we'll take nominations right up until the day before the Yarmouth volunteer reception, so we may have to look to change the venue just based on the numbers of volunteers that are being nominated. So that's a good thing, and we'll make that happen. The other small thing I did want to report was on, I know it's been a, an item of contention with the central school backboards, I just checked with McLeod Welding, they're doing the install for us, they had some fabrication work to do on some of the brackets, they finished the brackets, and they should be installed within a week or so.
Good, no, that's McLeod banking. Good stuff. Thank you, Frank.
Thank you.
Congratulations on the hockey championship again, Frank.
Good stuff.
Thank you.
Good stuff. Hate planning, you have small child at home too, that's not what I meant. I just thought because he didn't have a report, there wasn't too much to, I didn't want him to have to wait for another half hour to.
I've only made one copy of these, but like, so you guys can share, because I don't want to waste color print, maybe.
No waste heat, no waste color print heat. No bother.
So, a bunch of stuff there, but we launched the Smart City Challenge for voting last night.
Yep, need the mic, need the mic.
Is it on? Yeah. Okay. So last night, we launched the Smart City Challenge, the ideas that we received from the public, we put them back out there for voting with, with some changes. We took the ideas and what we found, what, that we received, and what we found was that the ideas were awesome, they were identifying problems within our community, and that was what we asked them to do. However, the actual innovative parts weren't developed the way that we thought they would need to be to actually win this competition. So what we did as a committee was we took the problems that the community gave us and the solutions that they had, and we built on those, and some of the ideas referenced the same issues and then had similar, similar solutions, so we combined those ideas. So what we have is six ideas now that are out to be voted on, and I have created colored posters, the, the really basic ideas, and then there is larger one-pagers that get into exactly how the ideas are innovative and they meet that Smart City approach, so that's what I've distributed to you for your information. We're going to leave the voting open for three weeks. At that time, we're gonna take the top two, bring it to the committee of the whole that week, let you know which ones those are so you can pick, and then staff will develop an application for, to submit for the competition.
So, so the other piece was, correct me if I'm wrong, the voting was open, but it shouldn't have been open, because they were voting on things that were not touching on the innovation side, they, they just weren't eligible as they were presented, so.
Yeah, so I'm gonna take full responsibility for that. I was away for personal reasons, and I had set up the program to start voting in the hopes that I would have it all ready and be here, and I wasn't here, and it got opened up for voting.
And, and that's not, it's, it's not something you, don't feel like you have to take responsibility, it was, it was just that people, just a couple people, too, let's not, let's not forget, just a couple people that are commenting that, you know, we voted on this, but once again, council isn't interested in our ideas, and that's not the case. They just didn't fit.
And I, and I, well, actually, I wouldn't even say that it didn't fit, I would say that we just took those ideas and further developed them so that they were innovative, transferable to other communities, and that they were large enough that fifty million dollars could do something with them, right? Because some of them were a little smaller scale.
Can I vote more than once?
No, one vote per person.
Can I vote every day?
No. One day, one vote, we didn't want to get into a competition like that. And Jim, just so you know, the, the seawall concept that you were quite excited about, we just combined that with the overall transportation idea to improve access around our community.
Jeff?
So, you worship, we had something like seventeen ideas, and every one of those ideas now is incorporated in one of the six. So rather than having seventeen choices, you have six choices. And the, the whole idea was about to try to get some engagement from the community, which we, we've gotten some. You know, the voting is for fun, ultimately, council sees this opportunity as, as a bit of a long shot to win, there's one prize, well, three prizes altogether, but it's a bit of a long shot, but it's a bit fun to think about what's possible. So, you know, people might be taking the voting a little too seriously, you know, we will submit an application or a proposal into this program at the end of the day based on your decision, and you might be influenced by the voting, but it's for fun. The other thing I wanted to point out is that, you know, communities can make a submission, and so a community, you know, we are one community, and, and there are other communities surrounding us, and so if somebody has a great idea and they can get another community or maybe even a community of interest to agree to submit that idea, why not? Go for it. But what, what Caroline and Natalie did in, in putting together these, these six is, I think, you know, give us a, a chance to be considered because we've met the criteria. I think if we don't meet the criteria and respect the program that, that is being run, then there's not much chance of getting any consideration, so hopefully people have fun with it and, and have had some opportunity to think about what could be in the community and, you know, at the end of the day, cross our fingers, you never know.
Thank you. Go ahead. Oh, sorry, Wade's on first.
Well, just one thing to say, and it's, it's, I mean, the competitive part of it, the idea that you could win a prize, all of that, it's, it's great, it really is, doesn't make the ideas any less valid, and now they're here, there may be something here that's worth sinking our teeth into, so, you know, it's fine, win or lose, it's, it's awesome, it's an awesome exercise in, in creating something, and innovation doesn't have to win a prize.
Natalie and I were saying that last night when we put the ideas online, we were like, we'd like to work on any of these.
Yeah.
They are all really good, fun ideas that, that could be further developed.
Pick one, let's do it. Just because you win or don't win does not affect the validity of, of the idea, an iota, so.
Completely agree.
Congratulations to those who've come up with some of this great stuff.
That's a, that's a really excellent point, really excellent point, because we could take anything and run with it, but in as, in as much as moving it to the next level, it had to have some boxes checked off, and putting them together gave them more of a, more meat to put that, to put it forward, I think is what hap, go ahead there, Jim.
I'm pleased with the six choices, but sure would like to get, see hundreds of votes for all of those, all of those projects, or, or one or two of those projects, and I just want to know how we can advertise that even more. I know earlier, when it was first introduced, Get Involved Yarmouth, I called it, or we called it Bang the Table, and that has a more dramatic effect somehow, and, but I, anyway, so we're now Get Involved Yarmouth, and somehow or other, we have to get more votes than just one or two or eight or ten votes. I know how I'm gonna vote, but that's just, just a comment, not meant to be a, a question, a concern, though.
So Caroline and I had discussed like how we would get this campaign out to the community, and so number one, our thoughts is we have to involve the press to be excited about the idea, so we want to share the posters that, and the collateral that Caroline's created. We also want to do some little video messaging, something that we can do in-house, and again, it's to get people excited around the ideas. it's to get people excited around the ideas. And the third thing we talked about is to really invite the people who have identified those ideas for us to get together, so that they can be champions of the ideas. So rather than it coming from us, let's, let's invite those champ, those idea givers together with us, and see how we can work on helping them to champion their ideas.
Yeah, and it does, and maybe go to, you know, do we reach out to groups and say, you know, so I always think of Don sitting at the table, like, some of these, some of these ideas for our youth and our future are just off the charts. So do you go to a school and say, you know, does the school say, go and fill it in? I don't know. You know, it's just so much capacity for, for the youth to get involved that it's, which is what we want.
I wish, I wish we had a lot more time. The deadline is April twenty-fourth, so we backed that up by three weeks that we would need to write the, the application.
Absolutely.
But certainly, some of the things we thought about is like what public spaces could, again, depending on availability of time, staff time, you know, perfect public spaces are the library, the mall, and, you know, certainly if schools will allow it, as part of, if there's a civic course, or if there's a marketing or ideation course, then, you know, we can come in and make one of them as a workshop example. So we'll have to see what we can do.
And I, I would also like to say, council, you're the champions, too, you're out there in the community, and you're on committees and part of groups, so if you have an idea or a group that you're part of, that one of these ideas would really benefit, share it with them, let them know what's happening, and that, that it could be a positive thing for them if we wanted to get to vote and be part of it.
Good stuff. Any more questions?
Maybe, Caroline's done a nice job on, on the site, clarifying some of the questions that were brought up. She did a really nice job.
Yes, thank you for that. Very professional and well done, and appreciated, because...
I, I was hoping, I saw it last night when I went home, some questions, and I was like, oh my goodness, that's just misunderstanding, and I wanted to, I was hoping that I could stop before people got on the band and were concerned about things.
And it's, sometimes it's the misunderstanding, sometimes how the misunderstanding is portrayed, you know, so, so thank you.
You also have my planning department staff report?
Yeah.
So if you have any questions...
So any, any questions for Caroline on her planning report? Good to go. Thank you. Econo, finance, Jerry's not here, economic development.
You have my staff report as well, if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Wow. Good stuff. I think we know where to find you, you're always available, so it's, makes it easier.
Thank you.
Thanks, Natalie. Operational, so Dave's not here, we're good with that?
Chad.
Chad? Okay. All right. So let's move on. Freedom of the City request. I am so lost in all these papers. There is one piece of paper here, there it is. Okay, so I just, I received, I think I forwarded the emails to you. Freedom of the City is an ancient honor granted to martial organizations, allowing them the privilege to march, march in the city with drums beating, colors flying, bayonets fixed. And I received it from Major Grossler of the Eighty-Fourth, Battery Commander of the Eighty-Fourth Canadian Armed Forces, and they are asking for the twenty-ninth of September. I didn't know if we had anything going on there, I don't even know what, I think I looked to see what day it was.
Twenty-ninth of September.
So you're in Strathcona?
Yeah, we're kind of over here, of course, that's too strong, I'm a little brother.
You're gonna be, looks like me and Jim Willheim on this one play. Sad.
That ought to be good. You know what, you're in good hands.
Cliff was really good with sharp instruments last night, right? He had the scissors menu, he was good.
I pitched a bargain, bro.
He did, too. Had a big strength.
Okay, so let's do this. Can we look at another date?
Well, I can be here, I can be here in twenty minutes.
Okay, well, you guys are all here.
Yep. So, make a motion, we accept the request from Major Grossler.
Oh my gosh, I'm all the way up to twenty, twenty.
Question?
Just hang on a second, I'm looking. Okay, question's been called. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Okay, I'm gonna give you the, something, I'll do something.
We had a parent's day there Monday, and I was gonna go get a Union Jack and Martin Thompson down at Main Street, my own parade, and say, I'm a white ankle saxon, and I'm proud of it, I'm gonna do it on the...
Oh my goodness, Cliff. Okay, bylaw, refeeding wild animals. So here's the, you what?
Be the shooter.
Well, that's what I said, but here's the deer, let's, yes. Shoot them and eat them. No, just kidding. I'll get in trouble for that.
Jimmy, what are you doing?
So, the suggested, oh my gosh, you guys are out of control. The suggested motion is that staff look into writing a bylaw prohibiting the feeding of wild animals within the town, including but not limited to deer, ducks, geese. So here's the thing. We've got crazy amounts of deer, we already know one life was lost because of it. Yeah. And I don't know what else to say to this, except that the province will probably say, write a bylaw as opposed to the province taking control. They are, what's the, what's the department? Thank you, I'm so tired and hungry. The Department of Natural Resources is, is, I don't know where they are with this, except I have a funny feeling they're going to, don't put the half a cookie in front of me. Somebody want a half a cookie?
What happened to the other half?
So we have to, we have to do something, and we put the signs up down in the, in the park, up Milton, saying, don't feed the ducks.
That doesn't do anything.
No, some people can't read signs, I think it's the red letters on the white, I'm not sure what it is, but, anyway, go ahead, Wade.
Well, Your Worship, the, the thing is, is that I'm kind of torn by this, because, yeah, I, I was one of the guys who brought this up.
Yeah.
Not that long ago, because it is an issue, it really is. But to me, I've always said that it drives me crazy when councils generally try to pass bylaws that are ultimately completely unenforceable. And let's be honest, how do you enforce that kind of a bylaw? It seems almost like a waste to me. And at the same time that I say, you know, I, I really think we should address this in some way, shape, or form, I'm not a hundred percent sure, I'm not even fifty percent sure that that's the shape or form that it should take, unless it looks, it's looked at as a purely symbolic move, I suppose, but it's an unenforceable bylaw.
Thank you.
It's a bylaw, and then people expect you to enforce it, and you'll have a bigger problem.
Yeah, there you are. Sandy?
Well, basically, I was gonna say about the bylaw, have we looked at the bylaws that like Truro, New Glasgow, and...
They're having the same problems, and, and so I know that UNSM is saying to Natural Resources, like, something's gotta give here. This is their job, it's not our job.
Right.
It's their job.
It shouldn't have to be our job.
And, and I just, I know that, I know that, I know that they're gonna come back and say, write some bylaws to help people not to feed the deer. Wait, I, I'm with Wade, I mean, I put this forward for discussion, because what can you do? But people keep feeding these animals, which renders them basically helpless in the wild, because they're so used to being fed.
Exactly.
And, and, and it just causes...
And it causes harm to people in the town, plus they're animals, because the deer carry ticks.
Yeah.
And parasites, which your own animals can catch from them, and humans, so it's not a good thing. I know that they've actually fined a woman, three, I think it was three hundred and some dollars for actually feeding the deer in Truro.
Well, maybe they did that, so I'll, I can call Mayor Mills and see what they, I mean, I know that when, when I, when we've been at UNSM meetings, Bill Mills has been one of the biggest pushers of, of, you know, we've gotta do something. Truro's having a really hard time with it as well, most communities are.
Yeah, in Truro, she got a two-hundred-and-thirty-three ninety-five dollar fine. So they do have a bylaw in Truro, Halifax, and New Glasgow, and if you're caught feeding animals, and they ask people to actually share, if you know somebody is feeding animals, you can get up to a thousand dollar fine, and in one of them, you can actually go to jail for thirty days. So I don't know. I don't know how they would enforce that, but I'm just saying that's...
Oh, you can slap a ticket on them, try to go through these courts, though.
But, the only thing is, you'd have to have a bylaw officer out all the time.
Well, actually, I think it would be what you just said.
The community.
Maybe people reporting it, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That was Phil. Phil first, and then you, Cliff.
I kind of agree with what Wade said, and I think Counselor Hood, one of the earlier presentations alluded to today, when he had Counselor Cushing and Larry Phillips here, is, what do you do about the enforcement, right? And that's, that's the most pop, that's the most thing I have a concern about. And then we had the situation here when I was the mayor, about the ducks up on Pleasant Street, I had a, a resident call me, or a constituent call me, and she said, I think you should put the duck crossing farther up the street, they might like it to go farther up there, where it's less traffic. So I said, as far as I know, I don't think ducks can read, she said, but if you put the sign up there, they'd go by it. So I don't know, I don't know what we're gonna do. It's true, I'm not lying. I don't know, I, unless you're gonna enforce it, and I, if you're gonna have, you know what publicity we're gonna get, you're gonna have a grandmother and her six-year-old grandson feeding the geese or the ducks down there at the back end of Lake Milo, and the RCP are gonna go up there, four cars, and arrest them, we'll be right on the national news by grandma treating her kid to a treat, and feeding the duck, I don't know, we've got, I know we got problems if you go to the golf course, Donnie, what about the geese down there, they're absolutely...
Stepping all over.
Yeah, it's unreal, the geese population in the town of Yarmouth right now. So I, I'm with Wade, and I kind of feel, I don't know what Counselor Hood's gonna say, but I think he alluded to it earlier when he talked to Mr. Phillips about enforcement, and I think that's where you're gonna have the problem.
Thank you. Jeff?
Yep, so, I don't know how much of your deer problem, or your deer situation is a result of deer feeding, and how much is a result of just an exploding deer population generally. So I don't think that the first deer that came in the town came, came in because somebody was holding a carrot. I think they came into town because there's more of them, and, you know, there is...
Buy tulips.
And, and there were some good tulips, but they're in town, I think, just because, just because there are lots of them. I see them every day along the roads and the highways, and there are a lot of deer. So the deer, deer are a, they have a regulated hunt, regulated by the Department of Natural Resources, and they change the rules from time to time. Currently, I believe there's still a buck law in, in place, which, which means you can only ta, only take a buck. I would suggest, and I did suggest in a request for decision that's on your, on your desk, that you consider the options that Truro's looked at, and, and there are a dozen of them attached there, they're on their website. None of them are particularly practical, except passing a bylaw, which is not necessarily practical to enforce. But the one thing I am suggesting is, rather than, you know, sit here and, and wonder what we can do, why don't we invite a subject matter expert from Department of Natural Resources to come before council and speak to us about how they manage the population, what their estimates are of, of the population, what is their goal, and how are they managing that through a hunt? I've listened to some, some podcasts and some information recently about situations in other parts of the world where species have gotten out of, out of control, and the most effective way of controlling species is by a hunt, or a fishery in one case, is by, by putting, basically setting, setting humans upon them as, as food. So the deer is already a, you know, it's a game animal that, that many people enjoy, many people are equipped to, to take part in the hunt, and if the herd is, its population is too much, then maybe there needs to be an adjustment in the hunt to, to bring things to a, to a manageable level, so that the deer are not a nuisance to people.
Okay, so we've got, in your, in your package with additions, we've got that, so let's deal with that now.
That's what I was gonna make, ask you to make reference to.
Okay.
Let's deal with that now, and, yeah.
Okay, so the recommendation is to invite...
Subject matter experts.
Council invited a subject matter expert from Nova, Natural Resources to meet with council at a future date to discuss status of deer population in southwest Nova, and measures to minimize human and deer interaction. Okay?
So moved.
Moved and seconded? Any further discussion?
No.
Questions been called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Thank you. All right. Change of date, May council meeting. I was up late one night. Don't leave me up late at night, you'll have fifty motions. Okay, so in, in the May council meeting, obviously, we're going to be hosting the spring workshop here, UNSM, so we are looking to, what is it?
The following...
It ends up being the following week, right?
It could be the seventh.
Yeah, we could invite them all in, show them how it's done.
It's happened before. They've done before, they've come in before.
Huh?
They've come in before, I think it happened before, that we had, during, I think they came in.
Yeah, that's, so Thursday night's busy for me, I can tell you right now.
I'll make a motion that we follow...
What would it be?
I'll make a motion that we put it on the third...
Seventeenth?
The third Thursday, which is the seventeenth. Yes.
You all right with that, Counselor Booth?
Good, okay. Who seconded that?
Moved and seconded, any discussion? We vote?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Mariner Center Concert Proposal?
All done?
Request for Decision Waterfront Development Action Plan. CAO.
Your Worship, at the last committee of the whole meeting, the report was, in its final form, was circulated to council, we had a presentation from Jeff and Morse, and so the question really from a staff perspective is, is do you want to adopt the report, accept the report?
Okay. Okay, so the first motion is to recommend to council to adopt the proposed waterfront development action plan as prepared. Moved? Seconded? Discussion? You looking, no, wait a minute, Wade's looking at his button.
Uh, no, I'm not with him, but I, I apologize, I wasn't here for fun, so I can't, in good faith, vote, probably May or May.
Well, that would be, end up being a what, an A?
I'll just abstain.
Can't abstain.
I don't think you can do that, can you?
Can't abstain, legally, you can't abstain.
Go with it. Go with it.
Go with it, we liked it. Go ahead, Cliff.
I didn't like it before.
No, we didn't either.
Wade, just stay with us for a minute. I thought that after we received the initial briefing from the consultants, that some of us thought that the thing was over the top in its form presented. I thought the majority just felt that way.
I certainly did.
I thought a lot of us thought that there are elements within it that are reasonably... there are elements within it that are reasonably, um... Yeah. And not something that might happen in a hundred years and cost maybe fifty or a hundred million dollars. So are we ready now just to task staff with taking that whole report and trying to make it an action plan, which I really think is something like, might happen in a hundred years? Or should we put a little more thought into it and focus on the elements of it that are reasonably achievable and which staff could come up with them? But, th- those are my thoughts, and maybe Jeff would have some comments.
He does.
So, so the report, um, contains some, some very achievable and necessary work. And it also includes things on the other end of the spectrum, which I think are, are, are out there. They're, they're maybe in the, in the realm of, of dreams or, or, you know, slim chances in, in a hundred-year kind of things, but they're, they're sort of aspirational concepts. And so I had the discussion with the consultants about council's concerns. And they felt there was, there was a, a mix, or they covered the spectrum, from, from things like the wharf investments that need to be made, all the way up to the ring road concept that, that may or may not ever happen because of cost and, and reasonableness, whatnot. To accept the report is not to, not to necessarily say, "And put this in next year's budget." To accept the report, it makes it the guiding document, like the blueprint. And so what I'm gonna suggest to you is, is that we, uh, we establish an advisory committee that we reconstitute from the Waterfront Development Corporation to an advisory committee closer to council. And we give them the report and have them pull out of it the things that they think in priority. Here's, here's what we think you should do in year one, all right? Year two, year three.
I think we're on the same page, Wade. Just so, we were all on the same page, but the last presentation kinda, I think it... Nope, that's not, it's okay. Go ahead, Jim.
I just wanna make, uh, I'm not sure if it's a good analogy, but when was the acoustics plan completed? Twenty oh eight? And, and... And, and, uh, and we're just, and we're still working on the implementation of that plan. And that's how I view this plan, is that, uh, we're, we're working on some short and then long-term goals.
Yeah.
One of, one of the things we've talked about a little bit is, is the form of the report. And maybe why we like, in some ways, the acoustics report is I think it communicates better to, to the, to the public. It has many more graphics and pictures, and so it's easy to wrap your head around the concepts and, and kind of visualize them. So we've talked internally about what do we do with the, with the report we received on the waterfront, which might be, every bit is good, but maybe not as, not communicate as effectively. And so, uh, there is, there is a, uh, a suggestion later on that we talk about a communications role. But the planning staff and the economic development staff, you know, picked up on that and they say, "You know, we can, we can communicate this to the public in a way that, that they'll be able to, to understand and embrace it." So, we know the communications piece isn't done with this report. We can't take this, you know, make fifty copies of this, put it out in town, in the front counter and, and expect people to get it, all right? It's, it's a little denser than that. Not as pretty. Hold the word.
For me.
Yep.
But then when you look at some of the things that if we, well, we, we definitely have to fix the wharves. But the other part of, like, uh, having shops down there and restaurants and cafes and stuff makes a difference, especially at the... What's that wharf down there?
Corkam.
Corkam Wharf. If that's implemented, to actually build above and have shops and stuff up there, that would be really nice. Have a restaurant up there overlooking the water and just different things. So that's a pretty picture.
It's a big idea.
Yeah, it's a big idea. So it takes somebody to, uh, wanna do that as well.
Good. Okay, so where are we on this motion then? This is the motion to accept. Okay, question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. And, um, let's, uh, let's recommend to council to request staff to repair a public awareness campaign to educate the public on the new action plan. Okay? Moved and seconded? Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against? Motion carried. Good stuff. Okay, transit route review, Ellis Road petition. CAO.
Uh, your worship, um, there, this item was deferred pending the, uh, presentation, um, uh, by Hope. I think Hope was here last Saturday.
Yes.
It's all a blur. Uh, as, as well, Deputy Mayor and myself met with the, uh, a couple of board members and the, uh, Director, Executive Director, to talk about the Hope Dial Ride and how, how it might help in, in filling some of the gaps, I guess, in, in terms of the local uh, public transportation system. And what they were able to confirm to us is that they're busy. They have, I think, six vans on the road. Uh, but they do have opportunities within their, within their schedule to, to provide rides to people who need rides within the community. And, uh, so they were, they were interested in, in, I guess, fulfilling a need if there's a need out there. And so, uh, I guess that's, that's good news. So, yeah, that was, that was, the item was deferred. I don't know if Deputy Mayor has any other comments?
Mayor was there, too.
Nope, the service. Yeah. Yep, so, so the recommendation is that we just maintain our current level of service, not alter the route.
Do you need a motion? I'll make a motion that we accept the, uh, that...
We maintain current level?
We maintain the current, uh, system and, uh, and, uh, encourage the, uh, people who are requesting, uh, work towards getting some compensation.
Good. Seconded? Discussion? Question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Did you have a question, though? You're good? If you add, if you add something, you gotta take something away, too, right?
Uh, your worship, I, I've, uh, wanted to make you aware that I've been invited to attend a meeting with, uh, our neighboring municipalities concerning, uh, transportation options in, in rural areas. Department of Energy is, uh, exploring the possibility of, of working with a company called Liberty. They offer a ride hailing service, uh, which you may recognize as the kind of thing that U- Uber does. But they're different, apparently. Um, I have no knowledge of, of them. But Department of Energy is interested in, in talking to Yarmouth County about the possibility of some sort of a project. And that's all I have to tell you at this point. We haven't had the meeting. It's coming up in a couple of weeks. Um, so unless you have any strenuous objections, I'll proceed to attend the meeting and bring back information. Uh, what I'm told is that, um, the difference, one of the differences with these guys and Uber is that Uber, um, is, is a much more aggressive company, and these people are more, uh, community, um, friendly. So what I take from that is they don't come in and threaten existing transportation providers. They come in to look to fill, to fill a gap. And so, again, I'll, I'll find more information and, uh, and bring back to you.
Thank you. Okay. Tell your story. So you're still on, but Caroline, did, did you want Caroline to speak to that?
Please.
So, this was a project I actually put together, I'd been thinking about and put together last month. Um, and it's, it's in the interest of putting together, uh, planning and development strategy for the south end or Yarmouth South. Um, I did decide last month that I thought there was too much public participation stuff going on and that we, I, there wasn't the time to devote to, to this initiative and, and didn't put it on the agenda. But it's back on and I didn't put it on. So I'm wondering if that's because somebody asked for it on or if it was just a mistake.
Do you wanna just move it? Do we wanna move it?
It, yeah.
Let's defer.
If that's okay.
We need a motion to defer? Okay. Sandy, thank you. Thank you, Don. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Sorry about that, but thank you.
It'll come back around.
Yeah, it's, it's important. We just wanna... Okay, Communications Officer, CAO.
Thank you, worship. Uh, we talked about this at, I think, the last committee of the whole meeting and, and the fact that we have so much that we want, information that we wanna get out to the public and everyone, everyone on the staff level and, and your worship as well are dealing with the communications issue on the corner of our desk. Uh, I suggest to you that, or I'm asking you to consider referring this to budget. Uh, I think there is a need and, uh, but I don't put that need ahead of, of fiscal reality. So let's refer it to the budget process. We'll try and incorporate the numbers and, and you guys ultimately will make a decision in that context as opposed to out of that context.
Moved and seconded? Any discussion?
Questions?
Question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Communications Officer, fo- funding of solar panels. CAO.
Uh, your worship, uh, you may recall that we've been dealing with a group of, uh, called ARI- uh, we've been referring to them as ARIA. That's an acronym, and I don't know what it stands for. Um, it's made up of those municipal electric utilities that we talked about a little while ago. So they, they jointly own several large wind turbines in the province to, to provide electricity to their own utilities. And they've, they've identified the solar, solar opportunity. Uh, and went around the province partnering with municipalities to put in proposals to, uh, to do solar installations. Uh, we were successful in, uh, we gave them two oppo- well, we gave more than two, but they, they were successful with two opportunities that we presented them. One was an array of solar panels on the roof of the fire hall. And the other one would be a ra- an array of solar panels on the roof of the compost facility. Uh, both, those two proposals were accepted. The approximate cost of the installation would be, uh, three-hundred-seventy-five thousand dollars. The expected payback on, on the, the investment is not huge over the life of the project. It would be a hundred-and-forty thousand for every hundred thousand invested, so forty percent return over the life of the project. You wouldn't necessarily jump up and down and get really excited about this, just simply on the basis of, of it being a great investment. However, it is a great, uh, opportunity to, uh, do a little demonstration project. It's one more thing that Natalie can, can, uh, promote us as a town as being, you know, involved in the green energy production. And, uh, you know, we can use our gas tax, which is, uh, somewhat restricted funds. We can use that for this project. And so there's a recommendation, uh, from Director Finance that the town undertake two solar panel projects with a cost of approximately three-hundred-seventy-five thousand dollars to be funded from reserves, so that's gas tax reserve. Future revenues from the sale of electricity will be used to repay the reserve, so they will go back into a capital reserve for the town.
Moved and seconded?
Life of, what, when you, what's the project life that you're referring to? How many years?
So my understanding, without looking at the spreadsheets here, I don't see, I don't see the life here, um, Counselor, and I don't have the spreadsheets.
So are they talking forty percent over that period of time?
Yeah.
Interesting to know how many years you're talking for, and that tells you whether it's four, six, eight, ten, twelve percent a year.
Yeah, I believe it's, it's like ten years.
What's MTV?
It's roughly four percent.
Net present value.
Whatever that would tend to.
Might be twenty years. It's not a, it's not a great, uh...
So it's not a huge money maker?
No. But what it does do is it allows you to, to do something in the green energy area. And so to tell you, you know, one of the things that I picked up from the, from the ARIA folks is they said, "You know what? If you don't wanna do this project, if you don't think it's, it's in your, you know, with something you wanna do with your money," they said, "We'll do it because we believe it's a good project and..."
So, so I'll make a motion that we support the staff recommendation on this, as outlined by the CAO to us here, just now.
Yeah, we just made the motion and seconded it. Good.
Done?
Yeah. Oh, my gosh. What a, what a herd Montley Crue today, huh?
It's rough around here, too.
It's rough around this table.
Wanna freeze this out? You wanna get more?
We need some here.
Go ahead, Sandy.
I just wanna say, too, with the solar power, that it's good for us for, through communities in Bloom as well. They, they like that.
Excellent. Okay, so we got bonus. I'll tell them. I'll tell them in Strathcona, 'cause apparently I'm going. Okay, so call for the question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Okay, Correspondence Amber Re- Presentation Request Art Project. Did we read this one? Okay, so the idea of having bicycles chained to lampposts as a summer installation. All different sizes and all would have their own unique look and theme. Some of them be propped up vertically, so, uh, anyway. Uh, approach businesses to be a sponsor and in return, I'd create their own bike. The idea is to bring art to the community and show them that it's cool. I get, I love it. I, I just love it. Like, I can imagine the col- go ahead, Natalie.
So Amber is actually, that that's gonna be, if, if, when she presents and if council supports this idea, is that will be first day of that.
Sorry. Thank you. It's probably on. I just can't... Cliff?
So this will, this will kick off a festival event, uh, that's gonna be happening June the twenty-third. So, um, so she's gonna pre- present this because, you know, we obviously have to look at street disturbance and some, uh, items with our engineer. But it's, it's, hopefully, will piggyback with a much larger event that will happen on Saturday, June the twenty-third.
Yeah, just a temporary. No, no, no. No, it'll be up all summer.
Yeah, we'll, we'll let Amber do the presentation.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, Jim's bike. We'll put Jim's bike up. Okay, so all I'm looking for is a motion to allow Amber to present. Okay, moved and seconded. Discussion? Question's been called. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Just to present? Yeah, it's to present. Don't worry. We're gonna get you a council bicycle built for two. We're gonna buy a bicycle built for seven. Can you tell we're tired? Okay, so we've got some, uh, additions. Oh, wait a minute. Previous, that's just previously distributed. Okay, so Request for Decision Deer Population's done. AMA Spring Conference Financial Request. So I have a question about that. You know what it is? Are they going everywhere else? Okay. I'm good then. Okay, so the AMA... May I have your attention, please? The AMA is requesting a thousand dollars to support the AMA Spring Conference, which is being held at White Point. Okay, moved and seconded. Discussion? Association. So we're UNSM, he's AMA. It's a board member. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried.
He's gonna find it.
We'll find it. I just need your attention for about one more minute. F C M's conference sponsorship. Okay. Got that there? C A O? I got it right in front of me if you want it. I'm trying to figure out what the ask is.
So your worship, F C M is the National Conference for Municipal Officials. It will be held in Halifax in June. And there are some sponsorship opportunities at the gala, at the mayor's welcome reception, and there's some other study tour sponsorships available. And so the amounts range from fifty thousand dollars if you want to be a platinum sponsor at the gala. And they go to all the way down to five hundred dollars. Let's see, five hundred dollars, you could be a, a study tour sponsor. There's all kinds of, of other things. There's several pages, I guess, there. So if you haven't had a chance to review it, and I appreciate it was only put on your desk this afternoon, maybe you'd like to defer this? And have a chance to review it and decide how you want to participate, if you want to participate in the F C M conference as a sponsor.
So how about this, folks? We need to take a peek at it, you know, decide whether we want to do anything. And if so, what? Can we, is everybody okay to put this on the council agenda, even though it's not run through committee of the whole? What do you want, how, how would you suggest?
I, I think you guys should, should review it and communicate with one another leading up to the council, so that there's at least some general sort of consensus, so you don't go in there and, and somebody makes a motion that you have no pre-warning about. If you have a chance to review it, communicate with one another. And, you know, when you come to the council table, at least you'll be somewhat prepared for the, the level of sponsorship or if there's a sponsorship recommended.
Okay, good. All right with that, folks? Okay? Request for Decision Arts and Culture Governance Model? Natalie, did you want to take that? Or? Okay, Jeff?
So your worship, we, we had agreed to issue a R F P to hire a consultant to assist us in establishing the governance model for the Arts and Culture Center. So four proposals were received and were scored, reviewed by myself, mayor, deputy mayor, our economic development officer. And after the initial review, two of the proposals stood above the others. And I think we were equally satisfied with either one. We did two envelope system, however, that left the price of the two proposals a secret until we were done that level of scoring. So we agreed that when we opened the envelopes, that the price would be the determining factor between the two firms. And so the recommendation is that council accept the proposal submitted by the firm McGuinness Cooper of Halifax, Nova Scotia for the Arts and Culture Center Board Governance Framework Design in the amount of twenty-three thousand seven hundred dollars plus H S T.
Good stuff. Go ahead, Jim.
So we're talking, this is in my mind's eye, the third item. We're, we're talking about a video, one-minute video at one point, and a economic impact study, and now a governance model for, for the Arts and Culture Center. I just had forgotten the.
So we started out with two items. One was, one was the refinement of the design, right? Do the business case and the refinement of the design. Within that, McKay, Lyons, Sweet Apple had suggested some value add that they could offer. Those were the video and the economic impact study, which both sounded kind of appealing. So that's all one initiative. This is a second initiative that we, that we initiated at the same time to issue an R F P, because this, this, this project is going to need a board of directors. And the board of directors will be responsible for, for future operations, but also in the nearer term, in the nearer term, taking on the fundraising part. So what McGuinness Cooper are going to do is they're going to work with us, engage with some key stakeholders, and come up with a model for the governance of this thing. Make, make, we've seen the table of contents in terms of what it will cover. It'll be quite comprehensive in terms of advising us on how to move forward with, with this project.
Would Jeff, and would this be an out, could we use this as a governance model for other, for the waterfront, or is that a totally different, unrelated?
I, I believe that there will be many aspects of their report that we'll be able to take and transfer to other municipal corporations that we have. The actual model itself might be unique to this situation and the number of stakeholders invested groups and so on. But many of the governing principles and, and recommendations around board governance under that shell that we will receive, I think will be quite transferable to, to our other corporations.
It's going to be an interesting operations budget discussion. I'll make a motion to support the recommendation.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Is Cheryl Hodder involved with this at N C R?
Yes.
P V S C, on which I serve as a board member, and I'm sort of getting, I've been on there a year now. Went through, I mean, they were already had a fairly robust governance structure. But we went through a three-day, or two-day retreat and have done a very extensive job on board governance. And I've learned a lot, frankly, about board governance that I never knew before. I thought I did, but I didn't. And they are the right people. Cheryl Hodder's been at this quite a long time. She's active with the I C. I can't give you the acronym, but there's a National Association of Boards of Directors now, and they put on seminars and courses. It's very active. So if that's, that answers my question as to where this is coming from, and I understand where they'll take us. And it would be a professional, proper guidance in terms of how, not only do we set up the entity, but how it governs itself going forward.
She's the lead. Did you hear Jeff say that? She's the lead. Good stuff. Okay? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. I have to torment you. Oh my goodness. These two, just like grade three.
I did an arson case in Glace Bay one time, and of course I was acting for the guy that was alleged to be the arsonist. She was representing the insurance company. It was kind of funny. She used to be a teacher.
It is, it is light, because as long as it's light, Tony, you can keep telling the stories.
She used to be a teacher in Barrington.
I went down to interview Chief of Police Glace Bay. And he says, he says, well, they never talk about the batch, did they?
Okay. Transport trucks. Okay. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, do we have to have a motion?
All right. Nope, he'll add it to the next thing. Okay, so motion to adjourn, you don't have anything in camera?